...of the buffering ordinance tonight. In addition, they have stated in this letter that they will actively look for a new site to the Hill Street site. And they want an opportunity to do that and ask for us to delay consideration of the buffering ordinance. After talking to Isaac Dixon, that community is eager to see this result and heartily agrees, I think I can say for them. So with that, can I have a motion to continue? It is item A on the public hearings agenda until August 23rd of 2016.
So move.
I would enjoy making that motion. I like the move that we continue to August 23rd.
You're gonna watch on TV that day.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there anyone? Yes.
Just want to say thank you for the work that you've been doing with Duke and with the Isaac Dixon PTO over there, the negotiations, and you manage that very skillfully, and I just appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Does anyone? We have a motion and a second to continue this item A on the public hearings agenda. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the motion to continue that item? No? Okay. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. None? No, none are opposed. I was saying none are. Not that I am opposed, just to clarify. All right, so now we get to do our bittersweet part of the agenda. And let us begin with Councilman Jan Davis. I see your family is here.
Have family and friends.
Should we face the audience or the? I don't know. How about, what's up with your family up here?
Family and friends.
Is it on? It's on.
My friend.
Okay. If this is gonna work, are we? Feel like this is good? All right. So tonight is a sad night because it's our last night with Councilman Jan Davis. Although now we're always going to be able to celebrate you when we walk into the U.S. Cellular Center because, as you said, my lobby, your lobby, is there. Jan, you have been on this council for a long time, and I'm gonna read a little bit about you. You get to take this home with you, but a history of Jan Davis. Whereas Jan Davis served as a member of the Asheville City Council since December 2nd, 2003. And whereas from December 11, 2007 until December 8, 2009, Jan served as Vice Mayor of the city of Asheville. And whereas since December of 2003, Jan untiringly devoted over 12 years to the city of Asheville during a period of time that numerous projects were initiated which will continue to have a revitalizing and growing impact on the city of Asheville, far beyond his term of office. In particular, his involvement in Asheville in negotiating an agreement that protected the city's investment in a high-quality water utility, his commitment to bringing safe and quality transportation networks to our community and region, his devotion to the men and women who serve to keep our community safe, and his unwavering support for gatherings that create a sense of community such as the 4th of July Celebration and Firework Show. And whereas Jan's commitment to the renovation of the U.S. Cellular Center led the naming of the U.S. Cellular Center's lobby as Jan Davis Lobby. And whereas Jan served as Chairman and Member of the City Council Boards and Commissions Committee, Chairman and Member of the City Council Planning and Economic Development Committee, Chairman of the Public Safety Committee, Chairman of the Police Officers and Firefighters Disability Review Board, Member of the Downtown Commission, Civic Center Task Force for the 21st Century, City Council Personnel Committee, French Broad River Metropolitan Planning Organization, Buncombe County Economic Development Commission, Citizens Police Advisory Committee, Subcommittee on the Henderson County Water Negotiations, Subcommittee on the Water Agreement, Economic Development Coalition, City Council Housing and Community Development Committee. Hang in there, just hang in there. He had to do all this, so you get to listen to it. Riverfront Redevelopment Commission, Buncombe County Tourism Development Authority, Asheville-Buncombe Regional Sports Commission, Downtown Improvement District, and the Asheville-Buncombe Regional Sports Commission. Whereas Jan has also served as liaison to the Civic Center Commission, the WNC Regional Air Quality Agency, the Asheville-Buncombe Historic Resources Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission, Tree Commission, Alcoholic Beverage Control Board, Civil Service Board, Firemen's Relief Fund Board of Trustees, Soil and Erosion Stormwater Review Committee, and WNC Community Media Center Board. Whereas Jan's unique leadership ability enabled him to build consensus on controversial and complex issues. And whereas he has earned the admiration and high regard of those with whom he has come into contact as well as the affection of his fellow public servants. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the City Council of the city of Asheville that the members of the Asheville City Council hereby express their gratitude to Jan Davis for the service he has rendered to his community, and that a copy of this resolution be presented to Mr. Davis. I asked where he came from for 12 years. I was gonna say, the happiest one here is your wife. We have a couple of other items. We have a plaque. Yeah, you better wait. You get your placard here, and you're the only one who gets this, because this is totally retro from your early days. Yeah.
That has value.
All right, here, I'm gonna hand these to you, so. And we have another bag, but if you would like to say.
Sure, I want to. Is this the one you want?
Pull it up.
Can't miss this opportunity. That's where I've been all this time. You folks at the tire store didn't see me. It's an amazing thing, you know, to think of being here now and where it was 12 years ago, Barbara. You remember it well, Jane. It's been an amazing time. I have really thoroughly enjoyed it. I won't go over all those accomplishments again because a lot of them I had little to do with, or was just a cheerleader in the wings on it. But I think, you know, the main thing is in a city like this that it's better today than it was then, and a lot of people tell you everything's better than it was. Well, it's not. We've come a long way. And feel fortunate to be here with AAA credit rating today and with having come off of a recession, and we're growing immensely. In fact, growing so much that that's why you're here this evening. It's a great city. It's a great part, a great place to be from and a great place to have moved to, and the community is better for all of us having been here. I want to take the time to thank Gary. I think one of the best things that we've ever done was hire Gary. That was early on, and the best thing that ever happened before Gary was Maggie, and she's been here throughout the thing. Took a little bit of a leave, but very special. Maggie is the one who takes care of us and makes sure that we show up on time and that things work. And she's like so many people that do great work, they go undersung, but we all, all of us in the building know that Maggie is the reason things work. And just like Gladys was over at the police department, Janet will be. It's just important people to do important jobs. Robin, we're grateful that you're here in this difficult time that we faced, and it's just amazing. Robin has been just like, she's been here all along, but we had Bob Oss before and Robin now. So I was privileged to work with two really great attorneys and great clerk. Those are our employees. But then we go past that to the, I mean, this building and all those city buildings out there are filled with wonderful people. And those of you in the room that are, I know that Julie's here, I'm sure I'm looking over somebody, the newly, or the council members-elect, I would tell you, the best thing in the world you can do is get to know the employees and recognize that they probably have more talent in their field than you do, and that you listen to what they say and then you try to make it work around it. And it, I think it does for the most part. I think that our employees are what makes the city great. And great buildings, great people running them, and great folks in those uniforms in both fire and police and the people that are in sanitation department, they all are just as important as the other. And the council members that I've had the opportunity to work with, I have been enriched by it, I've enjoyed it, and it, there's not that many of you. In fact, you're sitting in a seat that's hard to come by, and, you know, when you look back, I asked Maggie early on, I said, who are the council members that I've served with? And I could remember every one of them very well and had them written down, and it's, there's not that many. So you become part of each other's life, and it's, that I'll miss most. It's an emotional time, but I've had a blast, and it's been, there's been some rough times. We've had some real tough things happen. When the water washed out, we lost the city water for almost a week, and that was a tough time early on, and people got displaced, but we came through that. We've had two deaths of public safety people, Captain Boyne and Robert Vigman, and it's, those have been hard to deal with. They were not good times, but we have survived as a family, and I appreciate being part of that family. Thanks.
She's all, she's a mess. I was trying, you know, she's been here 40 years. I was like, so this is gonna be one of the bad ones, right? Aren't you sad to see them all go? Well, no, not all of them, but tonight, yes. Tonight, we can say we're sad to see them all go. Okay, Mark. Sorry, Kat, where are you? Oh, Kat, yeah.
My son Taylor.
Yes, all right.
Super grand.
We should just have this small child come up too, because he's eager to. Okay, Mark Hunt. Whereas Mark Hunt served as a member of the Asheville City Council since December 6, 2011, and whereas from December 10, 2013 until December 1, 2015, Mark served as Vice Mayor of the city of Asheville. And whereas Mark untiringly devoted over four years to the city of Asheville during a period of time that numerous projects were initiated through his leadership, which will continue to have a revitalizing and growing impact on the city of Asheville far beyond his term of office. In particular, his commitment to Asheville's economic stability and his commitment to the development of a multimodal transportation network that connects people to places through greenways, sidewalks, bicycle lanes, and roads. And whereas prior to Mark's service on City Council, he demonstrated leadership and community collaboration during his service on the Greenway Commission from February 14, 2006 to January 10, 2012. And whereas Mark served as Chairman and Member of the City Council Finance Committee, Chairman of the City Council Boards and Commissions Committee, Chairman and Member of the City Council Planning and Economic Development Committee, Member of the Economic Development Coalition, Member of the French Broad River Metropolitan Planning Organization, Member of the City Council Governance Committee, Member of the HUB Community Economic Development Alliance, and Member of the PAC Square Board of Directors. And whereas Mark also served as liaison to the Greater Asheville Regional Airport Authority Board of Adjustment, Community Action Opportunities, Eagle Market Street Board of Directors, and Planning and Zoning Commission, Civil Service Board, Asheville-Buncombe Historic Resource Commission, Asheville City Board of Education, and Soil and Erosion Stormwater Review Committee. Whereas Mark has been a powerful influence for good in the growth and progress of the community, and whereas Mark was unique in his sensitivity for doing what was best for the entire community, and he had encouraged in expressing his convictions, and a special way in dealing with complex issues. And whereas Mark has demonstrated in many practical ways his deep and genuine love for the city and the surrounding area, now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Asheville, that the members of the Asheville City Council hereby express their gratitude to Mark W. Hunt for the service he has rendered to his community, and that this resolution be entered into the minutes of the Asheville City Council and that a copy be presented to Mr. Hunt. I'm gonna hand it to you.
Esther, thank you. That was really, really nice. There are a lot of things on there that you, I really do all that, so thank you so much. Just a few words to some people that are special to me here. First of all, to Chris and Jan, four and a half years ago, I became a candidate for City Council, and Jan's one of the first people I went to speak with about that idea. And of course, Chris and Jan were in that race. And there's nothing like weathering a six-month or so campaign with people to develop a special relationship. And guys, I treasure those days and everything since then, and the bond we have. And just in the past few days here, I've really come to appreciate the wisdom that comes with retiring gracefully from City Council, as opposed to going a different way. But it's great. All my friends on City Council, you know, this work is challenging, it's gut-wrenching at times. And again, there's a bond that occurs with the shared challenge and the shared joy at times. And I really appreciate all you guys. I do. We've all had special moments. Esther, your leadership is one of the great memories I've got of this. Esther stepped up and ran for mayor a couple of years ago and did it with courage, and she's done an awesome job as mayor the past two years. It's been a real honor to be Vice Mayor in support of that. So thank you so much for all you bring. Being mayor in a council-manager form of government does not bring with it the authority that other types of city governments do. And it's, it can be challenging for a mayor who really is, from a technical standpoint, sort of the chair of this board, but doesn't have additional authority. It takes a special person to rise above, and Gordon acknowledged Esther's leadership regarding the Duke Energy Isaac Dixon substation. That's just one example of the ways that Esther has understood how to lead. And so, again, thank you for all of that and your support of me. To the staff of the city, to Gary, Maggie, Robin, there are other senior staff here, but when you're on council, you get to know lots of staff. And I want the community to know that we have a dedicated and loyal staff that care deeply about this city. And as Jan said, we are fortunate to have great staff up and down the ranks. And Gary especially, the city manager role is so important in terms of the overall leadership and governance, and it is a dance. Sometimes there is tension, sometimes there's joy, but it takes a lot of work to function as a governance group to lead a city like this. And Gary Jackson, you're a special person playing the role you do, and you make all of us on council look better than we deserve. To partners in the community, I want to, and by partners, I'm talking about other levels of government, nonprofit partners, others in the community that step up and endeavor in this greater cause of civic leadership, tons of appreciation. You know, Esther reads off all the engagements we have as individuals on boards and involvement with other groups out there. And the community gets nowhere without the broader effort. We can't do this as a city government alone. It takes, it takes a broad civic effort to advance the whole community. Back up to Julie Mayfield, Keith Young, Brian Haines, I don't see Keith or Brian here. Congratulations on your election. I have great admiration for all three of you, your courage to step up and lead like you are, best wishes for success, and understand that there are a lot of people that are here to support you, both here and on staff, but I believe the community as well. And you will feel that, and it will be important. To the people of Asheville, thank you for voting for me, and thank you especially for all the words of encouragement starting four and a half years ago up till, you know, as this meeting was starting. Thank you so much. It means a lot to a council member to feel the support broadly from the community, my family, Kat Taylor here, Colin is out in Portland now, and my friend Susan who came, and all my close friends. It's a big step to jump in and try to serve as an elected official. It takes support, and I've felt that especially from you guys. Thank you. And I'll just close by saying, this, there's a lot of joy for all of us up here. I think I speak for anybody that has stepped up and sat in these seats. There's a lot of joy, there's certainly challenge, but there's a special joy that comes with it. And so for me, it's been a joy and an honor to do this. So thank you again.
Okay. Chris Pelley. You know, it really has been an honor to serve with all three of you, and I'm not saying a lot because I'm going to get all chipped up, but you guys have been phenomenal, and I am now going to read to you a resolution recognizing your accomplishments. Whereas Chris Pelley served as a member of the Asheville City Council since December 6, 2011, whereas Chris untiringly devoted over four years to the city of Asheville during a period of time that numerous projects were initiated through his leadership, which will continue to have a revitalizing and growing impact on the city of Asheville far beyond his term of office. In particular, his commitment to improve the livability of Asheville neighborhoods, which included implementation of a dedicated neighborhood sidewalks program, resumption of funding for traffic calming, creation of the Neighborhood Advisory Committee, and involvement with the Festival of Neighborhoods. And whereas Chris served as a member to the City Council Boards and Commissions Committee, member to the Housing and Community Development Committee, member to the City Council Public Safety Committee, member to the City Council Finance Committee, member to the Metropolitan Sewage District, alternate member to the French Broad River Metropolitan Planning Organization, member of the City Council Retreat Committee, and ex officio member to the Citizens Police Advisory Committee. And whereas Chris also served as liaison to the Asheville-Buncombe Crime Stoppers Board, Neighborhood Advisory Committee, Recreation Board, and Greenways Committee. And whereas Chris has been a powerful influence for good in the growth and progress of the community, and whereas Chris was unique in his sensitivity for doing what was best for the entire community, and he had the courage in expressing his convictions, and a special way in dealing with complex issues. And whereas Chris has demonstrated in many practical ways his deep and genuine love for this city and the surrounding area, now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Asheville, that the members of the Asheville City Council hereby express their gratitude to Chris A. Pelley for the service he has rendered to his community, and that this resolution be entered into the minutes of the Asheville City Council, and that a copy be presented to Mr. Pelley.
Thank you, Esther. Before they sit down, I just wanted to introduce members of family. This is my sister Mary, my wife Juanita, my grandson Hank, my daughter Julia, my son-in-law Powers, and my mother-in-law Louise. And thank you all for coming today. I appreciate this recognition and just want to say thank you to the citizens of Asheville for the support that you've shown me and shown all of the members of council. As we've heard from both Mark and Jan, is the reason I think the council is successful is because we have such a strong staff here, beginning with city manager Gary Jackson. Part of what makes that successful is hiring good people, and Gary has provided such good leadership on that, that we have an amazing staff to work with. And any of the results and any of the successes that we're enjoying here in our community here is largely to such a terrific staff under Gary's leadership. I won't take too long here, but I just want to say that my kind of experience on council is so much of what we do is trying to balance competing interests in our cities here. Economic growth with preservation of our community or preservation of our landscape, city services with trying to keep the tax rate as low as we can. It's a constant thing of trying to balance, and we're gonna be hearing issues tonight on trying to strike those same balances here. But I really feel like that the other members of council and our mayor and each of us have really tried to take that to heart and try and seek solutions that really genuinely serve the public interest here. And it's been my honor of a lifetime to serve you all, and thank you very much.
Let's give an opportunity for members of the family and friends to make their discreet exit. Thank you for coming tonight. If we've got anybody in any overflow room in the building, we do have some available seats up here now. If there's anyone waiting in the hall to find a seat in council chambers, we have some available seating. Looking at the consent agenda, is there any item on the consent agenda that anyone has any questions about or would like to have considered separately, need an explanation about?
Yes, Esther.
We have one member of the audience that had, that wanted to ask one question about it.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to ask.
If you'll come forward to just state your name.
Sabra Raven, I'd just like item J about the transit system to be broken out into a separate item.
Okay.
That's where I was headed, Sabra. Item J, I don't know that I'm necessarily needing a separate vote. We could have one if that would be helpful. I just wanted, I was hopeful that the city manager could walk us through this process and walk the public through what's going on here, just so everyone can be aware of the change that's underway. We're gonna issue a new request for proposals around the transit management. I was just hoping you could walk people through that, Gary.
Would you like to do that now or after doing the rest of the consent agenda?
Do you want to consider it separately, and then we'll, let's do that. Okay. So is, does anyone have any questions, comments, explanation needed for any other items on the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item J.
Mayor, I just wanted to make one mention of one item. Mayor, I just wanted to make one mention of one item. Item I, the new Lester Highway sidewalk. We're authorizing the city manager to enter an agreement with the NCDOT. And folks, this is good news. This is exciting. This is over two miles of new sidewalk from Patton Avenue all the way out to the city limits on Lester Highway, over 12,000 feet of new sidewalk for our city. And my understanding is will be completed by 2018, so over the next two years or so, you'll see those improvements going in.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. And if we also could just hear just a little bit about item C, the ordinance granting a franchise to operate a low-speed vehicle shuttle service within the city of Asheville. Is there anyone here who could just provide us a little bit of information about that?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Ken Putnam. I'm Transportation Department Director. We have an individual that wants to start a service where he would use a low-speed vehicle in the downtown area to basically shuttle folks between hotels and downtown restaurants and so forth. And he'd be operating this service essentially all day, even up to 3:00 at night. Now, the difference is that we have to be careful of, it's officially called a low-speed vehicle. It is not a golf cart. It is a vehicle that is registered and licensed to be used on the highway, so it is registered by the DMV. So it is an official vehicle. But when you look at it, it does look a lot like a golf cart.
So, is this for a period of time? Is it?
Well, he would essentially operate this business 365 days a year.
No, I mean, would the franchise agreement terminate after a year?
No, the way we do the franchise agreements now is they run indefinitely until the city or the party that's got the franchise agreement would give due notice to stop it.
We discussed this at the public safety meeting, and I think since we're discussing it a little bit, it might be worth noting that this kind of a shuttle vehicle has the potential for substantially reducing the demand for parking downtown, and particularly for people circling block after block after block looking for parking places. Because people staying at hotels can park at the hotel and then catch the shuttle to a restaurant, or a bar, or a concert. And that means we're going to, it should relieve some of that circling and circling and the problems with downtown on busy nights.
Ken, can you tell us a capacity? How many folks this will carry?
I'm not sure if the individual has that nailed down yet, but probably anywhere from four to six.
And it's just one vehicle?
Right. He'll be starting off with one vehicle, but of course, as soon as it's successful, he'll be adding vehicles. And he's hoping to get started right before the SOCON tournament comes to town this year.
Okay. Are there any other questions regarding any item on the consent agenda? Okay. I have a motion and a second. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the motion to approve the consent agenda, all items except the last item, item J, regarding the transit system? Except J? Yes. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right. We've adopted every item but J. Now if we, we have someone in staff that could talk to us a little bit about item J?
I'll introduce it, and Transportation Director Ken Putnam can help respond to questions. In general terms, what you have before you tonight is a resolution authorizing an extension through June 30th, 2016, for First Transit Incorporated to perform the role, the required role of a mass transit management agreement. We've had First Transit in this role since July of 2008, under separate management agreements. About six or eight weeks ago, we went to the Transit Committee and the Multimodal Transportation Commission, and with this question of should we go through a request for proposal process, or simply extend the contract with First Transit for a year and go through a request for proposal process that would be required to get to consider other management companies. After that deliberation, we decided to go ahead, notwithstanding the differences of opinion about whether or not we should do this or not, we decided to give notice to First Transit that we were going to do a request for proposal process. And that put us in a situation where we would not have First Transit under contract through December 31st of 2016, and instead would allow us to expedite requesting proposals and moving ahead with that schedule. We're in that process right now, and the point of this extension, which would be to July 1st of 2016, instead of December 31st, 2016, is to allow for that process of receiving proposals from competing management companies, to evaluate the merits of those proposals, and then make a recommendation to have the next management company in place by no later than July 1st, 2016. So, to get us through that transitional period, an extension is recommended, and with that, we would not be bound to First Transit beyond this extension, and would be able to select from the proposals that are submitted in the interim timeframe. With that, I'll try to answer any questions. And Ken, is there anything you want to add to that?
The other item that would be taking place during this time, too, would be renegotiating the union contract that the management companies are required to do, and that would take place essentially during the month of January, and possibly into February.
And that takes place, though, between the management company and the union? The city is involved in that negotiation?
No, that's correct. Yes, ma'am.
Are there any other questions from council on this item? So, do I have a motion, and then I'll ask for public comment on the motion?
Need you to approve? Second.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. If there's anyone wishing to comment on the motion, you have three minutes. And watch the lights on the lectern, they'll let you know when your time's running.
My name is Sabrina Raven. An extension is necessary. I would prefer it be three months rather than six months. Whether that's administratively and financially feasible, I can't speak to. What I would like to speak to is the staff memo that tells you guys to vote for this because it will help the system continue to operate in a safe and efficient manner. There are serious concerns about whether the system is operating in a safe manner now, and I have not seen any reason to believe that it will continue to do so, or that it will change to become a safe manner while First Transit is in place. If you approve it for six months, it should be because it's a bureaucratic necessity, without pretending that safety has anything to do with it. If the six-month period is not an actual bureaucratic necessity, but merely a convenience, then it should not be approved for six months because we have real safety issues right now that are making the bus system dangerous for people to ride.
Hello, thank you. I'm Diane Allen. I'm local president of Amalgamated Transit Union 128 that represents bus operators and garage employees. I want to, thanks for our calls. She's exactly right. We do have high safety concerns. Being the most recent, on Thursday, November 12th, 2015, my bus was shot at. Two windows were shattered, and the concern from the management company has shown no desire. They've not asked the well-being of the passengers, nor the well-being of the employees in the area driving the buses. Also, I understand the six-month may be a financial reason, but a six months is way too long. We've waited long enough to make sure that our taxpayers, and our riders, and our employees are in a safe environment. We are missing routes. People are getting terminated from their positions because their buses are not coming at all. Most recent, Saturday, we had a route S2 that did not run from 2:15 on to its last hour. So that was half of a day that a complete route didn't even go through Kendallworth. And that is a needed area as well. So I asked for this extension not to last six months, just over financial reasons, because we need a safer transit for our city. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to comment on the motion? Okay. Seeing none, any other questions or comments before we vote on the motion to approve?
I've been hearing from some constituents about the missing buses, and from what I've heard, some of the buses have not been maintained to the point that they aren't available, there isn't a bus available for a route at a given time. And if that's the responsibility of the management company, it seems to me that that's a serious shortcoming. And I would ask, do we need to take six months? Is that just the way it has to be structured?
The main reason for that is based on the past contracts that we've done, when we've gone through the process, it has been that intense to go through it. With all the, once we issue the RFP, and once we get the responses back, there's a series of questions that we have to answer. And then with our existing resources that we have to devote to this project, we feel like the six months is needed. Now, the secondary benefit to all that, of course, is that we're then going to be able to have the entire budget within tied in with our fiscal year, instead of the way it has been in the last several years, where half the budget was in one year and half the budget was in a second year. But the primary reason is we're just trying to make sure we have enough time that we can solicit all of the available contractors that would want to come in and be involved, and make sure that we vet the process as thoroughly as we can.
Well, maybe a secondary question then would be, if in fact, we have buses not running because of a failure of the current management, I don't know if that's the case, but if that is the case, do we have any way to push them to do better now, before their contract expires?
Yes, and the reports that we're getting don't necessarily agree with what you've heard tonight, but I don't have all the hard data. But yes, we can look into that and make sure that the buses are on the route.
Thank you very much.
Please just state your name.
My name is Anis Weston. I work for the transit. I just want to say that I've been here 13 years, and the buses, one time, it was good at one time. And then when First Transit came, you know, we trying to work with them, but the thing is, though, they don't take our advice, they don't listen to us. And the sad part is that we know our job wasn't to be done, not to be done, at this end of the year, at the other year. But all I said, oh, right now, we are eight buses down. We can't, they don't know how to, I guess they knew, trying to work on it, but right now, we got eight buses down. We got no buses running. Drivers, including me, come on their days off from work, and you know, I have to spend my family like y'all do. And you know, it just get to the point now, when you work every day, and your days off, drivers get stressed, hesitated, and it just, it's just not good. Sitting behind that wheel with a 30-something thousand pound of bus, and you're not thinking clearly, and then you start speeding, you run light, buses miss people and stuff, and it just, it get to the point, you just tired. And you know, when he said it's going to get fixed, fixed, this going for eight years, we ain't seen nothing yet, and we still, like, eight drivers short, eight buses down, and it just, I don't see nothing getting better. And the mechanic, when you got a supervisor, ask them, well, what's going on? Well, I don't know, but I check into it. That's not an answer we don't want to hear that. So, six months, that's too long. I see a lot of driver leaving, but assuming where they keep going, ain't going to be no bus here to run.
Based on what I've read and what I've heard, that this process is a six-month process, I feel that if we could do it quicker, I would prefer to do it quicker. To the men and women who are out there driving these buses, first, I just want to say thank you for what you're doing every single day. I realize how hard this work is that you're doing, and the service that you're performing for every citizen in this city. I want you to know that it's valued, and appreciated, and respected, and we're going to make sure that we have the best management company we can for the transit system going forward.
And I'd like to add, Mayor, any measures that staff can take to insist on performance under the contract. You know, a contract is a technical thing, and we've got certain ways that we would have to go about making sure we enforce it, but I would just, you know, from the council, ask that we redouble efforts to make sure we're diligent from our side on that contract.
Anyone else wishing to comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed? That wraps it up for the consent agenda. We do not have any presentations and reports tonight. We have one public hearing item. Again, I don't know if there's anyone in an overflow room, but we do have available seats now that we've moved through the agenda. If anyone is waiting to find a seat, we have available seats here. Okay. The next item on our agenda, the only item under our public hearings agenda, is a continuation of a public hearing to consider amending portions of the UDO relating to the definition of home stay, and the districts in which home stays are permitted in the table of permitted uses, and the standards required for home stays which are designated as a use by right subject to special standards. Now, let me say a couple of things before we begin this public hearing. This is a continuation of a public hearing we had in August on this topic, the topic of home stays, and it was well-attended, and I had four pages of signups, and tonight I have one page of signups, so I'm not sure what that might mean for how we go tonight, but it sounds like we have a few less speakers. I have some people that have signed up to represent a group. If you're representing a group, you have up to 10 minutes to speak. You do need to have three individuals that waive their time, so that you can speak for 10 minutes on behalf of the group. So, three, three. And I'll need to see those three people and have them raise their hand. Then those three people that waive their time will not be able to speak on this topic. But anyone who's just speaking for themselves has up to three minutes to speak. So just be sure to watch the lights on the lectern there, and that will educate for you when your time is drawing to a close and the light needs to stop. A couple of points of clarification. We will have staff. Shannon Tuck is here, and she's going to present this item tonight. But one thing I might mention is that this came to us in August. There were recommendations that had been vetted by the Planning and Zoning Commission for changes to our existing home stay ordinance. Our home stay ordinance concerns a use that is currently allowed with restrictions in the city where folks rent out a room in their house, is sort of a short way of saying it. That ordinance already exists on the books for Asheville, but this is a proposal to change that restriction. This is not a proposal that gets into standalone, short-term rentals, the whole house, where the whole house is rented, that is not covered by this item. Also, if any of you are looking at the agenda online, or looked at the agenda online, I make that two pages of signups, never mind. If any of you are looking at the agenda online, the hyperlink which takes you to the suggested changes are not the changes we looked at in August. They are, they include recommendations from staff. So, we'll see that more clearly when staff presents it, but I want folks to know that the proposed ordinance attached to the staff report is an attempt by staff to address the concerns that they heard at our last hearing, and not necessarily the final product for adoption tonight, up for discussion tonight is probably a better way to put that. I think that's it in terms of housekeeping. Oh, and one other thing I said last time, and I'll say again this time, the city of Asheville does not receive the room tax directly, and the city of Asheville only receives four cents, less than four cents, of every dollar of sales tax collected. So, one of the things we heard early on in this process was, why don't So, one of the things we heard early on in this process was, why don't you take the room tax and do X, Y, Z? So just, just so you know, we don't, we don't directly get the room tax. The room tax is being paid now by at least Airbnb, as far as we know, and that is remitted to the Tourism Development Authority, which is a separate, a separate entity. Okay, with, with all that back information, we will begin with a presentation by Shannon Tuck, who'll, who'll bring us up to speed where, where we are for this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Manheimer, members of council, and members of the public. As you all are very well aware, this is a subject, the subject of home stays and short-term rentals, has been thoroughly discussed over the last couple of years in a variety of forums. And so I'm not going to repeat my presentation that was done back in August. And what instead I'd like to do is try to kind of discuss the evolution of the ordinance amendment that's before you, and being under consideration tonight, as well as some of the more recent considerations that have been researched and investigated by staff. I, in order to do that, I'm going to try to kind of just focus the conversation, kind of cut to the chase. And I believe all the council members should have a hard copy, if you prefer to look at a hard copy. And I've distributed a few amongst the public as well. This chart is an effort to sort of compare and contrast what the development standards for home stays currently are, because the City of Asheville right now regulates home stays, allows and regulates home stays, and have, and has since the early 2000s. So I have on the left, in that first column, is the actual standards, or a summary of what those standards are. The first, the second column, excuse me, are what our current UDO requirements are. So this is what we currently enforce. The third column is the recommendation that came from the Planning and Zoning Commission that came before the council back in August. And then lastly, the final column are some of the more recent considerations or possible alternatives, or exceptions that could be considered, that came out, or came as a result of that public discussion during the council hearing back in August, and then subsequently at planning and economic development. I think it may be easiest to go through these items one by one, although I will do it quickly. So please just stop me if I'm going to quickly, or if you have any questions as we go. But to begin, and I think this will help illustrate how this chart works. To begin with, we discuss where home stays are allowed. So under the current UDO, they're allowed in these residential zoning districts. Under the proposed draft ordinance, we propose to add it, or expand the options for home stays into the urban residential district, and then as a permitted use, so not as a special use. So if it's a permitted use, it is not subject to all of these development standards, it's just allowed, and you just, and you just have to comply with your basic development standards. But it adds it and clarifies in these more mixed-use districts that it's a permitted use. So I have, in this pink, is an effort to illustrate what I believe is a less restrictive move. It's a change that is less restrictive than the current ordinance, or it's something that reduces a barrier, or expands the opportunity. And so in this particular case, we're adding acreage, we're adding potential properties that would be eligible for this application, and so I've highlighted it in pink. In contrast, those that are highlighted in yellow are more restrictive. So moving on, display of goods, products, or advertising is not allowed under our current ordinance, we are not proposing any changes. Who manages the property? Under the current ordinance, it says it has to be owner occupied. We are proposing to change that, or to clarify rather, that it just simply needs to be a full-time resident, it can be an owner or a tenant. And I put a pink dot next to that. It is, I think you could argue, less restrictive, but it's something that we actually, that was a change we had to make in order to be compliant with law, so don't really get to take credit for that. But it is less restrictive, if you want to think of it that way. Employees as part of the home stay operation, under the current ordinance, we allow one full-time employee. Under the proposed ordinance, no employees. So as you see, that is highlighted in yellow, so more restrictive. Retail sales, not allowed under our current ordinance, no change proposed. Maximum floor area dedicated to the home stay, we currently limit it to 25%, no changes proposed. Other activities allowed, and by that we mean things like a wedding, or anniversary parties, things of that nature, hosted or catered events, not allowed under the current ordinance, no change proposed. Meals provided, yes, they are provided under the current ordinance. We are proposing to change that, that meals are not required. And again, that was another change to comply with law. Off-street parking, what is required under the current ordinance is just what would normally be required for the home. And there are some exemptions for certain homes that are located in strategic areas to be exempted from off-street parking requirements. Under the proposed ordinance, no off-street parking requirements. So those again, that are highlighted in pink, are less restrictive, and the ones that I have starred are the ones that we believe are significantly less restrictive. I mean, these are, these are going to have a dramatic impact on opening up this opportunity. Accessory structures used for guests, not allowed under the current ordinance. A lot of people don't understand that or recognize that, but it is not currently allowed, and we're not proposing to change that. We do add some language that clarifies that it's not allowed. The owner, where the owner resides, in the current ordinance, it's required in the principal structure. And again, there's really no change, we're just clarifying that it's the owner or the tenant, per the change that we made earlier. Now, that is something that was discussed as an alternative is to, oh, excuse me, I jumped. Sorry, I'll come back to that. Minimum house size, 2,500 square feet under the current ordinance, no minimum under the proposed, proposed ordinance. And again, that's a very significant change. The number of bedrooms allowed, three under the current UDO requirement, three under the proposed ordinance. Signage allowed, four square feet, but only in multifamily districts, no signage under the proposed ordinance. Exterior lighting must be residential in nature and directed inward, based on our current standard, no change under the proposed standards. Separation from other home stays and bed and breakfast, 500 feet under our current ordinance, no separation under the proposed ordinance, again, another significant change. Building and other code compliance, it's not specified, but it is required. So what we've done under the current ordinance is simply make it clear that it's required. But that's not necessarily a change, but we are clarifying. And I accidentally skipped over some of the alternative standards that have been discussed since the last council hearing. Under the full-time resident, we do, it's not a change, but what we did is we added language clarifying what does it mean to be a full-time resident. And then the off-street parking requirement, we heard a significant amount of public comment last time about problems with off-street parking. So we looked to the ADU discussions and some of the research that was done there, and we felt that one off-street parking requirement, or one space per home stay for an off-street parking requirement was reasonable. So that is an option that could be considered. And then for our existing standards, those were the only other alternative standards that were discussed. Now, there were standards that have been subsequently discussed that were not originally included in the, or not subsequently, but as part of the ongoing conversation, that were not covered under our current UDO, but came up as part of the proposed draft. So to go over those, I've kind of separated them from the, the first set of standards into the second set of standards. Multiple permits per property, we clarify, not addressed in the current UDO, as I mentioned, and we clarify that one permit per parcel per lot. Permits per person, not addressed under our current ordinance, not included in the proposed recommendation, but we are offering as an alternative consideration that you could require one per person, or legal entity. Home occupations allowed concurrently, oh, that got cut off. Home occupations allowed concurrently with home stays, not addressed under the current UDO, not allowed under the recommendation, that's not changed. Liability insurance, taxes, I think are similar in that those are required, but they're not part of a UDO requirement, so they were not addressed under our current standards, but we clarify. So, is that a more restrictive change? It was always required, we're just making it clear and communicating that on the front end to the applicants that it's required. Non-conforming properties being eligible, and this one, I'm just going to take a minute to talk about a little bit. So, we, we've already talked a bit about off-street parking, and you heard a number of people testify that they have urban, small urban lots that don't have any off-street parking, and if you require off-street parking, it's going to make them ineligible for this application. What we recognize as part of that conversation is that we have a lot of other non-conformities, meaning properties that don't comply with our current standards, but were legal at the time that they were built. The most common are lot size, lot width, and probably even more common than that is buildings, or the structure that encroaches into a setback. In some cases, it might be all the way up on a property line, in other cases, it might just be a little bit of an encroachment, or foot or two into a side setback, or a rear setback, any setback really. And what we learned from the ADU research was that just looking at lot size and lot width, that 20% of our residential properties are non-conforming to lot size and width when you add them all together. We know, just intuitively, we know that there's a good percentage more that would be non-conforming to encroachments into a setback, possibly even more than 20%. We have no way to measure that, because it would require a survey for each property, but we know, just based on our experience in plan review and in board of adjustment, that there's a significant number of non-conformities for setback encroachments. So out of concern that that would essentially eliminate a third or more of our residential stock from having this opportunity, we're also proposing that the council consider the standard that was included in the, the most recent ordinance that would allow these non-conforming properties to be eligible for home stay. I hope that is clear.
Does anyone have any questions about these, these pieces? I've got a follow-up question for Shannon.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. The idea of no employees, does that mean you can't hire a house, a maid service?
Yeah, that's a great question, and I meant to clarify, no, that does not mean you can't contract a maid service to come in. That would be like any repair person, maid service who comes in and does that occasional work.
Okay, I had a question, not to exceed 30 days, wouldn't, if someone started out to rent for a short term and decided that the person wanted to live there permanently, why couldn't they be there more than 30 days?
Well, they certainly can. It just means that they move out of a home stay status into a regular old residential dwelling status.
Right, okay, I just didn't see what I mean, okay. The recommendation of the number of bedrooms being reduced from three to two, I think I read in one of the pieces of, that it, something like, well, some percentage, 18% some percent of, of possible homes might have three, it would still be below 25%, right? I mean, that's what that would, if, we're still talking 25% of the home area?
Yes.
And if three bedrooms were less than 25%, what's the objection to the, I don't quite get that. What's the objection to?
Do I have both requirements?
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, it seems to me that if you had two large bedrooms that had the same square feet as three smaller bedrooms, I don't get what, what we're gaining. That's, let me think, there was one other, well, I have a question, but it's probably a larger question, yeah, I'll wait on that one. Thank you.
This might be a question for Robin. If, if the long-term resident of the dwelling is in there with discounted or zero rent, is that, is that a compensation? Is that an employee? Is that person being compensated for being present to operate the home stay?
Well, that's an interesting question. I would.
I mean, I guess more specifically.
I suppose.
That situation precluded this ordinance?
I don't thi, I think that you've got to have that main person who's living there full-time at, to make it a home stay versus a freestanding short-term rental. I don't view that as being what the employee, no employee exception or requirement is supposed to cover. I think it is, if you have a home stay, are you going to have someone who is, you know, the check-in person or whatever, in addition to the person who lives there? Now, if in fact, someone is actually living there for free, I'm not sure how that, that that's necessarily their compensation. Could it be? I suppose so. It would be income for income tax purposes, but I don't think that that's what the employee, no employee requirement is supposed to be covering. I don't think that they are necessarily an employee of, of the home stay.
So that situation would not be precluded?
I don't know that, that that is our, within our province, if you will, to get into the relationship between the owner of the property and who the long-term tenant is, and what their compensation arrangement is. I think that goes beyond really what, what we should be looking at as a municipality, as long as you've got someone in there full-time who is running or administering or managing the home stay.
Just a follow-up question, what are the, the documents reference required forms of verification of permanent residence? What would be examples of those? What would be, make up the list of things that would?
Well, it's, so we're defining full-time resident, right?
And we haven't finalized that list, but things like a copy of a tax return, or a W-2 with your name on it, a utility bill, driver's license, things of that nature. Of course, sensitive information can be redacted, we're not interested in that. It's just, you know, that individual with the address.
And it's, I'm sorry, is it, are two forms of proof of residence?
I think we required three, or two, I think in the P&amp;Z draft, it was two, but in the alternative standard, we asked for three.
Thanks, I'm good, thanks.
I was approached, Shannon, by one home stay permitted owner, about the, the home occupations that are allowed concurrently. Apparently, that was not considered in the original regulations, and there is at least one permitted individual out there that does artwork in their home. And is there any provision for grandfathering in those people who have made the investment for non-intensive uses that are in home stays?
So the way the grandfathering works is, we're proposing to make this an annual permit. So that would, that would essentially grandfather anybody for that first year. But when it came time to renew the permit, they would have to comply with the standards that are in place. So under the current draft, there is nothing that would grandfather that home occupation beyond that first year. But that is something that could be considered if the council chose to.
I hope we will consider that, because I think it's discouraging to someone who is in a profession like art, that, that have gone to the expense of upfitting home, and, you know, that's not intensive in a neighborhood. I mean, it's very subjective, and I'm not sure how you decide what's non-intensive and what is, but I hope we'll consider that.
Do you have an idea, Shannon, of what the home occupations would include? I mean, these are permitted home occupations, or, I mean, lots of people work out of their home, they don't necessarily go get a permit to do that.
Right, so not all home-based employment activities require a home occupation permit. So I think we, we discussed in the last hearing that if you are a copyright editor, and you just have a laptop at your kitchen table, that isn't anything that requires a home occupation. Home-based offices don't require home occupations. Is those occupations or those activities that have a significant amount of delivery activity, customers coming and going, noise, vibration, fumes, smells, things of that nature, those are the things that require a home occupation permit. So some common activities would be, you know, the artist studio, as Jan has already mentioned, that's a good example. We have a number of home-based offices, therapeutic or counseling services, that have a number of customers who come and go. We have, you know... We have, you know, home-based catering businesses that have a lot of activity, a lot of deliveries, things of that nature, usually the types of businesses we see.
Does that mean we generate a list of the prohibited ones, then?
We just, I mean.
Simply the ones that require the permit? Is that what the definition is? The businesses that require a home occupation permit are the ones that are prohibited from having homestays?
No, we're saying any home occupation is not, not that home-based office that I'm talking about, but a, somebody who has the artist studio, or the chocolate-making business, or the catering business, you can pick. You can have your business, or you can have your homestay, but you can't have both. And the feeling behind that is just simply, you know, that they both involve an increased level of activity in the home, and when you have, you know, one kind of activity, and it's, it can perhaps be manageable and absorbed, and still fit in the harmony and function or character of that neighborhood, but when you sort of double-dose it with a home occupation and a homestay, that perhaps that's crossing the line. So, that's the reasoning behind it.
I understand the rationale, I guess, for the person who's interested in doing this, though, how will they know whether their home occupation triggers this inability to also host a homestay?
Well, we used to be able to.
Is it just going to be a subjective staff call based on the usage, or is there a list of these occupations out of your home are the ones that we won't allow to also coexist with a homestay?
I believe the standards describe controlling noise, deliveries, people, it's a use-by-right, just like a homestay, and it has development standards or special standards associated with it. So, it's really their ability to comply with those things. So, it's not a list of these things are allowed and these things aren't. It's, everything's allowed as long as you can meet these standards.
There's a definition for home occupation in the ordinance.
Yes.
And that's what it's gonna, it's gonna be, which is an accessory use of a dwelling unit or accessory structured for limited non-residential purposes, which is clearly incidental and subordinate to the use of the dwelling unit as a residence. So, that's catching, you know, a lot of things. I think, then you go to the use-by-right, subject to special requirements, and you look at the things that you have to meet with respect to that, and I think what Shannon is saying is that if you're just using a computer in your home, in this day and age, it doesn't even, you're not even really even triggered as that being a home occupation. There are a lot of other things, though. So, I mean, it's up to council right now as to make the decision whether to have this requirement or not. It's not in there now.
So, in the current ordinance, what we have right now, it says that you, other activities are not allowed. That, what I'm reading there in the chart, says other activities are not allowed, and how would this be different barring the coexisting home occupation from the?
Those other activities referenced in the chart are referring to activities associated with guests staying in the homestay. So, that's the wedding, the anniversary party, the, things like that.
To a certain extent, it seems that if one concern about the whole idea of there being guests in a neighborhood is bad behavior, that a home with someone working at home is probably far better monitored than a home with people not working at home. I mean, you know, if you have an artist plugging away in a studio, you know, that.
The idea is more the impact, if someone had, like, a massage therapist had customers coming and going all day, as well as guests coming and going, that it would double the traffic impact and other impacts to the neighborhood.
But it still feels kind of subjective to me. I mean, there's, how about somebody who's running an eBay business, and UPS shows up once a day? Is that, is that more interruptive than the neighbor who just buys a lot of stuff on eBay and has UPS show up once a day? I mean, I, yeah.
Fair point, yeah. Well, once we have drones, all this will be taken in.
What's the, I was looking, what's the parking for home occupation?
I don't believe it's, I don't believe there is a parking requirement.
Can you describe for us currently, and what the, you know, if I'm somebody who wants to come to the city and get a permit to do a homestay in my house, what's going to happen to me? I'm going to show up at permitting, or I'm going to get online? What am I going to have to go through to be able to get a permit to do this?
Well, I think this, the process that you would experience today under our current standards, that we're really looking at that very hard to make that significantly easier for applicants in the future. One of the things that we're excited about is if we eliminate the requirement for, or rather, the ineligibility that comes with nonconformities, then we don't really need to have a site plan. If off-street parking is required, that's something that can be checked during the inspection. So, in the future, we hope that we can get by with just a simple, just a regular residential application form with maybe a supplemental checklist, that very clearly kind of helps people explain, you know, how many bedrooms do they have, and where are they located? And then, through the inspection, that would also help reinforce and document some of those features. We hope that we can turn it into an online application, but at least initially, it may not be online, but it'll be, it'll be a lot easier. So, to walk you through what we hope the process will be, is an individual would be able to take the documents off the internet. We would have a development guide that would kind of help explain what some of the basic requirements are, so that they know before they get started whether or not they're eligible. Print out those documents, fill them out. They should be fairly self-explanatory, but we may include some information to kind of help explain some of the terms, and where to find certain bits of information. And then, they would turn those documents, that application form, as well as any supplemental documents that are required, like the proof of residency, into the Development Services Center. And they could just come in, drop it off, it would be handled by plans reviewer. And with the addition of Mr. Morgan, who's our new short-term rental development review specialist and enforcement officer, he would be able to, as a dedicated employee to that activity, he'd be able to kind of go through those fairly quickly.
On that score, how long does it take, how much staff time does it take to get one application done?
I mean, right now, it's longer than what we would like it to be.
Okay, now, though, I mean, right now.
Well, right now, it comes through a level-one review process, so it's not very different than what we do for somebody building a new family home. So, it's, it's a maximum 10-day initial turnaround, but it can be as little as three days.
Well, what I'm, what I'm really getting at is, if we right now, we've had 18 permits issued since 2005, I think, something like that order. There are estimates that we now have certainly dozens, maybe hundreds, some people claim 1,000 going on in town right now. A lot of people weren't aware that they even needed a permit for doing this. So, now, we're going to start getting more compliance. If we have 500 people applying, are we going to be able to do that in a month? No, I don't think so. I mean, is it a year? You see what I mean?
Yeah.
It seems like a real big backlog.
We do anticipate that initially, once the standards are adopted, that we're going to see more of a, you know, higher volume initially. We have been taking in applications currently for people who expect to become compliant under the new rules. So, we do have a number that are basically reviewed and ready to be permitted, once we know exactly what the standards are. So, we've got kind of that first wave already in. We do expect more after that, and initially, if we need to add additional staff resources to handle that initial flood, then we will do that, but we expect that the numbers will taper off and be more reasonable and steady as we go, once we get over that initial hump.
So, Shannon, you mentioned if we do this so that nonconforming properties don't have to come into compliance, which is challenging if your whole house doesn't meet a setback requirement, for example, that you won't require a site plan. Now, but how about the issue of the percentage? You know, right now, the idea, right now, the current ordinance requires that you can't exceed 25% of the dedicated floor area, of the floor area dedicated to homestays. And additionally, there's this restriction to three bedrooms. Do you require some kind of drawing of the house, or how do you determine, I mean, what do folks have to go through to?
We do. So, right now, we require floor plans, to kind of show, you know, show the layout of the space, the square footages, and the bedroom locations. We have had some discussion about whether or not there's a way to eliminate the floor plan requirement, too. We may be able to kind of settle on sort of a happy compromise, where maybe we provide just some simple graph paper, and people can just kind of very simply, rudimentary kind of sketch out, got these three bedrooms on the lower level, and, you know, and a bathroom that they share, and, you know, something that is easy for the average person to do. But the staff does feel that having some sort of graphic representation, spatial representation's valuable. So, I think we will require something, but it's not going to be the full-blown site plan. I think a lot of those building features that we're going to look for, those safety features, are going to be examined during the inspection.
And if we were to eliminate the percentage requirement, and just go with, you know, some cap on the number of bedrooms, would a floor plan be necessary at all?
Well, it is helpful when we look at all of the building requirements in total, just to kind of, you know, because there are, you have to have an exit for the bedrooms, you have to kind of know what that layout is. I mean, that will be reviewed to some degree during the inspection, but again, it's just helpful to have something that sort of spatially represents it. But I do believe we can put something together that's very easy for somebody to just sketch out really quickly.
Shannon, the permits per person, one per person, you know, it seems to be addressing this idea that, you know, we don't want this to become, you know, some big company comes in and buys up 10 houses on a street. How do you enforce that relative, I mean, so, what if I, what if I form a new LLC for every, every house I want to buy? And so, it's not really technically the same person, how?
I believe we have to treat an LLC like a new person. So, I think it is a legal entity for, that can ownership. So, it may be more appropriate to say, you know, one permit per person, comma, or legal entity, or some, you know? Robin may better advise on that.
We can't change this, after, we can't regulate ownership, and we can't change the statutory requirement of an owner, I do not, I would, it would not be my advice to do so. So, if we say you're going to have, only have one per owner, that we would have problems with conflicting with state law, that that one person, for purposes of our ordinance, means not just one person, but any entity that that person has any ownership in. So, while I appreciate the, the need to perhaps limit the number or the concentration, I think that trying to define an owner as being something other than a legal entity, as it is in other contexts, might be problematic.
In providing the information, the identification to prove full-time residency, how would, how would that work, so if somebody went and formed three LLCs, but came in for their permit each time?
So, each person who comes in to apply, I mean, they are the applicant. So, they are on record as the applicant, the owner, manager of that particular homestay at that address. So, that's really the name we'll be, we'll be checking, or that would be one of the names we'll be checking, yeah.
It could be a tenant, so it would be an actual person who had those types of things, but the tenant might be leasing from an LLC.
It sounds like the short answer is we can't absolutely.
You can't really do this.
Stand that activity, but you can put in the best measures you can to try to make it more challenging.
Well, and to be clear, how it could work, for an enterprising investor that would want to be in the business of having several homestays, could create, let's say, four LLCs, have four different individuals that would be the nominal tenant of each of those buildings, and have, and have four separate permits, each involving a different person and a different LLC, and we, we would be fairly defenseless at keeping that from happening. Is that true?
I think it's true from, from that perspective. If you look at the number of bedrooms, or the percentage, or other types of limitations, you might discourage that in other, in other ways, but as far as using it to have a different definition of a person, I don't, I don't think that that's the best legal way to do it.
And that would really carve into the profitability of the exercise. I mean, buying a house and only can rent out.
25%.
25% of it, you're giving up a lot to just have a resident manager there for it, I think.
Right. I mean, I do think that that has a tendency to have a depressed effect on the economic return. But nonetheless, I think it's a possibility that, you know, if somebody wants to go to that effort.
And is it possible to get a home mortgage for a business? Probably not. So, if the person's buying the house with a mortgage with the intent of using it as a rental, I don't know.
Okay, do we have, we, we haven't forgotten, we still have a public hearing to conduct. Are there any other questions, clarifications, questions with Shannon? And there'll be other opportunities to do that, but.
And I hate to belabor things, and maybe I'm missing something here, but the, we've had, how many since however permitted is, like, 16, or?
Maybe 20, somewhere in there. We've got a number that are waiting to be permitted.
Because to me, it seems very difficult to imagine that all these people came out to consider renting for 30 days. I've never considered renting a place for 30 days, and to me, it seems like we're creating a pathway to short-term rental that we're going to have to deal with at some point. We're kind of doing this as an in-between step, because I can't imagine that all these people would want to do a 30-day rental. I mean, you know, maybe I'm wrong, but, and there's a lot of people here that are interested in it, but, and just how many customers are there out there for a 30-day rental?
What do you mean by, what are you talking about? This is all less than 30 days.
Okay, this is less than, this homestay is less than 30 days.
You could do it for a weekend.
Okay, good, because I am missing that. Okay, good enough.
Okay, any other, no, yes, no?
Well, one, I guess, this is, I may as well ask this question while you're there. So, there's been some enforcement effort going on in the last couple of months, and I've learned from one constituent that they're being asked to sign an affidavit that they would, that they're going to quit if they haven't been permitted. Are they also being informed of the permit process at the same time with this, or is it just enforcement?
Yeah, I mean, that conversation almost always includes, what are my options? I mean, I can't speak to this particular situation, but the very large majority of the circumstances, we do talk about what's prohibited, but what is allowed, what their options are, what do we take to come into compliance?
Okay, good, good. Thank you.
Okay, we will now open the public hearing, and I'm going to be, am I forgetting anything, Maggie, before we start that? No, I think we, I think we've got just about anyone in here who wanted to be in here, and I don't see too many available seats, but if there is anyone in the overflow room, it looks like we might have, raise your hand if you have a seat next to you. Do you, does anyone have? Okay, so we got maybe like five seats up here, if folks want to come into this room. The first person I have signed up to speak, Amy Kemp, 25 North Liberty Street, speaking for a group. If you're yielding your time to Ms. Kemp, please let me know. Okay, and two more people? One, two, okay, three, so we got three total. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council members for hearing us tonight. My name is Lisa Schumaker, and I live in a home that is a shareable, self-governed household with four full-time residents and two overnight rooms, so I know what it is to share. I'm here tonight as a representative of Asheville Home Sharing Network. Before the last city council meeting on homestays, you all received an email from Gary Jackson about our organization. And I'm here not to speak for one side or against another, but as a representative of a network of residents, neighbors, and folks who share. We believe that home sharing arrangements optimize the use of property, which is especially important in where housing is limited, such as our city, and provides opportunities for people to connect, and makes housing more affordable for those who are willing to share their space. We also believe that home sharing should be self-regulated, which is why we have created this organization to move in this direction. this organization to move in this direction. Our network aims to present a unified voice regarding an expanded home stay policy, which will enable city residents to participate in the prosperity of this tourist economy, and at the same time offers affordable lodging to the average income visitor. Our mission is to provide networking to Asheville area residents who share their primary residence, their personal perspectives, and our unique culture with visitors who are equally unique and have much to share with us. Sharing cultivates creativity and better cultural understanding. The facts are that home sharing creates affordable housing for city residents who would not be able to live in Asheville without opening their homes to guests, and furthermore, it creates affordable lodging options to guests who would not be able to afford Asheville without a home stay option. I invite council members and area residents and the public at large to learn more about our mission on the website, ashvillehomesharing.com. I have several testimonies that our members have written on that site, and I think we heard a lot of this stuff last time. So I don't think I'm going to, to read that part this time again. Like I said, there's a lot of, lot of folks who are really glad that there is a home sharing option. The stories are many, school teachers who afford a summer vacation by renting their home, musicians who tour all over the place but could never afford to own a home, yet in Asheville, they have a place to come home to, retired folks who share their homes and life stories with new friends. The people that stay in our home also need a place to sleep, a kitchen to cook in, a local perspective, and they can't afford $50 for dinner eating out every night, or $200 to $400 a night for a room. They might be here visiting family, a health provider, or taking a workshop for a couple of weeks, like at the Asheville Yoga Center. Can you imagine spending $4,200, the average cost of a two-week stay in a hotel downtown, and then trying to eat out every meal, too? Without a wide range of affordable options for people coming to Asheville for the wide variety of reasons that they come here, we will just have the kind of tourist who reads about us in the Wall Street Journal and gives anthropology their spending cash. Asheville Home Sharing Network supports the ability of Asheville residents to offset the high costs of living in Asheville by sharing themselves, our culture, and their homes with visitors seeking a personal and affordable place to stay in our city. And we applaud the city's efforts, and especially Shannon Tuck's year-long effort to make home stay regulations more easily obtainable to all Asheville residents. Thank you, Shannon, and thank you, council, for considering this over a very long period of time. We most agree with Cheryl's, Shannon's original proposal, and we think that you should consider adopting that original version, not requiring off-street parking, which is mostly what she presented again. In addition, we want to encourage you to include ADUs where a primary resident lives on the property. And please consider that many homeowners work out of state for anywhere from like a weekend to months at a time, and would also greatly benefit from being able to run out their homes while they are away. Again, this optimizes limited housing resources in our city. We recommend that the city use the Association of Asheville Home Sharing Network for inspections and reviews to reduce the burden and cost associated with ensuring ongoing compliance, while also ensuring the privacy and rights of individuals. We believe that inspections of homes is an unnecessary burden on both city and homeowners. While it's possible that standalone STRs may come up for consideration as a commercialized house with licenses and regulations, just like another vacation business, there is a huge difference between standalone STRs and home stays. STRs are primarily a business, whereas home stays are primarily a residence that operates a home business for supplementary income, much like a craft business might be run out of your home, with no inspections or licensing required. In addition, Asheville City has not required COs for property for years, so there's no legitimate reason to inspect someone's private home that they're living in. We also believe that that's going to be a huge burden on city to inspect all these homes and a compliance nightmare to treat a home as a business. And to conclude, I want to read from our website. Asheville Home Sharing Network intends to assess, moderate, and resolve issues related to regulatory compliance, safety, and neighborhood concerns, and to address these issues without violating personal freedoms and the right to privacy in our homes. We aim to work to create a working model of a balanced microeconomic infrastructure that's good for all. We really want to help with this compliance piece, and we also want you to consider our ability to self-regulate within our own homes. Thank you, council.
So some of you might remember we have that no-clapping rule, but I realize you were excited, it was the first speaker. All right, so you got it out of your system. My next speaker is Jackson Tierney, 74 Magnolia Avenue.
Hi there. I'm also listed as a group, but I only need five minutes, and I have one person to yield their time.
Oh, we don't get to split this up, you know, but this has come up a lot lately, this whole splitting this up thing. Maybe there are three people here that aren't interested in speaking, just attending. There you go, look at that, okay. We're all about sharing here.
All right. Good stuff, good timing. So, good evening, my name is Jackson Tierney. I thank the council for their efforts over the past year on short-term rental rules development, especially for having multiple public hearings to listen to the concerns of citizens. Council and staff have worked many hours on home stay rules now under consideration tonight. Unfortunately, this proposal language falls short of what is needed to have reasonable home stay rules. The rules are still overly restrictive in parts and vague in others. Restrictive because they continue the unwarranted ban on accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, and vague because they do not spell out exactly what criteria will be used to inspect and improve a dwelling unit for a home stay permit. This opens up the homeowner to too much discretion on the part of the inspector and uncertainty as to whether a permit will be granted. Therefore, I am recommending the council not take a vote on these rules tonight. Mayor Manheimer said it well in the aftermath of the election when she stated, "To me, this election was very helpful. One of the challenges has been figuring out how people really feel, because it's difficult to know when you have a loud minority of voices." I assume that's what you said, it was in the paper, and I always believe everything I read in the Citizen Times. Well, I think it's now obvious we have a loud majority of voices. So why are we preventing the new city council members from having a say in this critically important topic, even though they are only two weeks away from taking office? It seems the prudent thing to do is to slow down and really think through the impact of the rules and how they're going to be implemented. I believe the most, that most people, excuse me, would rather the staff take the additional time to develop more clearly understood rules than make a rushed decision tonight on rules that fall short and do not reflect the will of the voter majority. Asheville would do well to consider STR rules of other like-minded cities that strike the proper balance of government control and homeowner flexibility. I did some research and found some interesting results. I looked at Austin, Texas, and Portland, Oregon. I picked Austin and Portland because of their similar culture to Asheville. Not surprisingly, both cities have home stay-like rules, although they don't call them that, as part of their overall STR program. Austin has three types of short-term rentals. Their Type 1 is equivalent to Asheville's definition of home stay. It requires a permit, but no inspection. As long as you have a certificate of occupancy and a proof of insurance, you can get approval for your home stay within three to five business days. Now again, this is a population of about 1.3 million, so it's a pretty good turnaround. I spoke to an ADU STR owner in Austin just recently, and it is literally that simple and straightforward. Portland has two types of STRs. Their Type A is equivalent to Asheville's definition of home stay. It requires a permit and an initial inspection, then a repeat inspection every six years. The scope of the inspection is clearly spelled out and is limited to three items. First, a review of building code requirements only for the sleeping room. Second, the presence of an interconnected smoke detector. And third, the presence of a carbon monoxide alarm. I also contacted an ADU ST owner in Portland, and she said the process was very simple and easy to understand. Both Austin and Portland allow ADUs to be used for STRs, and they are managed within their home stay programs. Both STR programs do not require off-street parking for STR guests. I will add that Austin, Texas, has a 50,000-person university, so parking is a challenge there as well. Both STR programs do not require sprinklers for ADU. We've heard some rumbling that that may be required under the consideration of ADUs in Asheville. And both STR programs require a single document to prove residency, not three documents as in Asheville's proposed home stay rules. In summary, Asheville's proposed home stay rules are overly restrictive and vague. Austin and Portland have workable rules that have a track record of use since 2013. They can be used as a blueprint for fair and workable home stay rules. Asheville's home stay rules should be changed to allow the use of ADUs as long as they are legal ADUs and have smoke and carbon monoxide alarms. No other requirements should be needed. The permit and inspection process needs to be simple, and most importantly, transparent. Please do not vote on this ordinance tonight, and let the new council members and the people who voted them into office have a voice on this important topic. I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you very much. Okay, my next speaker is Michelle Smith, also indicating that this is for a group?
I, yes.
You're yielding your time. Okay, okay. Then the next, most of the rest of these say they're speaking for, on the, just for themselves. All right. Cecil.
Stuart.
Stuart, you think that, okay. Stuart Alfred.
My name is Stuart Alfred. Austin, Texas, right? The land of milk and honey and vacation rentals. Last week, city council imposed a moratorium on Type 2 permits, or running through March of 2017. The problem spacing Austin, as a result of their rush to legalize and permit vacation rentals, has been well documented in national publications, including the New York Times and Bloomberg. To quote one Austin council member, "We should never have allowed a commercial use to operate within a single-family zone in the way that we have." Other cities with large tourist populations have also had to enact moratoriums to address similar problems that result from allowing commercial lodging in neighborhoods. In San Francisco, Airbnb has to spend $9 million to meet Proposition F, which is an extremist proposition that, to limit Airbnb-style short-term rentals, that included a vision for civil actions. Despite this, Proposition F still gets 45% of the votes. Airbnb's response is to hire a former White House crisis manager who worked on the Monica Lewinsky scandal, and also was brought to come in and, and help deal with the situation of addressing the pushback that you're getting in cities. Now, I bring up these facts to urge this council to take a hard look at what is happening around tourist cities such as Asheville, and wade very cautiously, deliberately, and carefully into these murky waters. The potential harm to Asheville from getting this wrong, as we are seeing in other cities, is very real. I would like to thank council and their staff for their efforts in improving this ordinance. Actual proof of residency and the presence of a full-time resident during the home stay is essential to any successful home stay ordinance, and I believe that the amended ordinance does that. As a city, we cannot allow non-resident occupied vacation rentals in our residential neighborhoods. I would, however, like to suggest one simple change to this proposed ordinance, some limitation on the number of permits per neighborhood to address the issue of clustering that is happening in other cities. While I personally think the best approach is to count, to have a count per neighborhood, the same thing can be accomplished with a proximity requirement, something that was in the original home stay ordinance. The fact that, when I say the original, I mean the original, original ordinance. The fact is that the home stays will bring more tourists into our neighborhoods. The more home stays, the more tourists. And these tourists, even if they are not disruptive, will change the nature of the neighborhoods. As tourists come into additional neighborhoods, the neighborhood changes. And the solution is very simple, to creep, to keep a count per neighborhood, or to keep some form of separation requirement, even if it's reduced from the original 500, reduce it down to 250. This council can always come back and change that later, but it's better to take the small steps than it is completely eliminate it, and then move forward and have to do what other cities are doing, and then go back and fix the problem. Move slowly, reduce it back to, say, 250 feet, and then look at it in six months.
Thank you. Jane Matthews.
The discussion of home stays has notably divorced itself from the huge issue facing Asheville, housing availability and affordability. I attended yesterday's Affordable Housing Summit, where no mention was made of the loss of existing housing stock to tourism. Our city leaders cannot in good conscience espouse a policy promoting affordable housing while at the same time undercutting the ability of existing housing stock to meet that need by turning it over to non-residents through the home stay ordinance. On affordable housing options, I speak from personal experience. When, as a young professional, I moved to Asheville from rural eastern Kentucky in the early 1980s, I rented a bedroom in a small Modford home that I shared with the owner, who had recently divorced. The extra income from a housemate provided him a way to meet his mortgage, and I found a place I could afford in a great neighborhood within walking distance to my job. Later, when my housing need grew to include my husband, we rented a very small garage apartment in West Ashroom from an elderly woman in poor health. It was modest housing by all means, but it allowed us, over five and a half years, to save up towards down payment on our first home. In return, our landlady, who didn't drive, had neighbors she could rely upon to run errands, help her out, and occasionally keep her company. With our meager savings, we eventually bought a home, a small 1906 cottage deemed unhappable by the city in a near downtown neighborhood on the slide, and we sweat-equated our way into homeownership with our own physical labor. Since then, we have worked nonstop for almost 30 years to revitalize, strengthen, and preserve our neighborhood along with many of our neighbors. Now, as a desirable community within walking distance to downtown, filled with a rich diversity of homeowners and renters, our neighborhood faces becoming prey to those who see purchasing a house there as an investment for tourist accommodations, rather than as a home for their family or someone else needing stable, long-term housing. If the floodgate of home stays or STRs is opened in Asheville, surely these types of housing options will disappear under the weight of the highest dollar, the biggest return. Ultimately, that return does not benefit all Ashvilleans. Those who do not, or cannot, own property will be left with fewer and fewer housing options at all rates, and many of the options to move up within the housing market, as we did, will disappear. According to the latest U.S. Census figures, we have almost 42,000 housing units in Asheville. Even if only 10% of the households offered home stays, that would be the potential loss of a minimum of 8,300 housing units that we need right now, 5,600. The loss of existing housing stock will only continue to move our housing deficit deeper, and we will have lost something worth much more, our sense of a place, our home, and the neighborhood that's, neighborhoods that make Asheville so special. If the tourist economy moves full force into every neighborhood, into all homes, as is proposed under the home stay ordinance, and by some accounts, soon through STRs, every corner of Asheville becomes tourist-centered. Your decision will be telling for Asheville- For Asheville, well, first and foremost, is a place to call home, work, support each other, and, most importantly, raise our children with the hope that they too, as adults, can live here someday as well. Please, I implore you to rein in home stays and not allow them to proliferate all Asheville's residential neighborhoods.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kama Ward. You know, we've been doing this a long time when we start seeing our rakers. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Kama Ward Kenilworth. Thank you for having me. I want to say thank you to the council people who are going off today and say congrats to the people who are coming on. And I want to give a special thanks to Councilman Hunt, because we were on the opposite side of this issue. But I had, I knew, and I had confidence that he was deliberating with the best interests of the people in mind, and I really appreciate that, and good luck.
Thank you, Kama.
So, tonight, I'm just going to go for the heartstrings instead of being technical. Or maybe not. Okay, well, I'll say that when I looked into the nature of home stays and short-term rentals, et cetera, in the city of Asheville, after I found the study that the city commission lacking, I spent several days, because I'm a nerd, looking at exactly where these were and exactly what was happening. And the estimate was that it was about 20 to 25 percent rooms being rented, and then the vast majority were whole units. But recently, there's been some changes. You're considering maybe ADUs, and I think that you'll get in a much larger percentage of what's happening while still trying to emphasize owners or full-time residents. And if you included ADUs now, the current listings maybe gets to 40 and 45 percent. And I think that the wiggle room that people always do when new regulations come, you'll probably get up to maybe 60 or 70 percent. So, with home stays only, you're carving off a small part, but if you go to ADUs or some kind of thing in between, you're really getting a large percentage of the people and reducing the opposition. Okay, sorry. I just want to say, I can't find it right now, I had the wonderful thing that my friend Laura wrote. My friend Laura called me several times over the past couple of years and said, "I don't know what I'm going to do. I'm going to lose my house." And we're like, "Okay, we're going to get a roommate for you." Call up, the roommate isn't working well. She's a single mother with two kids. So finally, I say, "Well, there's this one thing. You can try Airbnb." So she tried Airbnb, starting late last year. She's been off of food stamps. She's been keeping her yard nice when she could never justify it before, and her relationship with her neighbors has actually improved because they are appreciative of what she's doing and that she has more free time to rent when her children are at the dad's house so not to have a stranger in the house with them. Thank you very much.
Okay, John Farquhar.
Farquhar.
Okay. Thanks.
First of all, it seems to me that this process has been overtaken by events. And I'm referring to the election, which had, as one of its primary engines, a lot of disagreements about short-term rentals. There's also a lawsuit, and there's some shifting opinions that we've been notified of recently. I would suggest, I would strongly suggest, that this whole process be put off for 13 more days until the new council members take their places. Secondly, given this uncertainty, it seems to me reasonable to freeze the issuance and prosecution of violations so far that have been much more aggressive since the amount was raised from $100 to $500. And thirdly, I would ask that, going forward, you expand the definition of home stay units to include accessory dwelling units. Now, there are three reasons for this. First of all, most ADUs are, in fact, single-host, single-guest units. They're almost contiguous with the home itself, and people are always there. There are no parking problems. Typically, if you rent a place as a long-term rental, there will be a couple. Each one of the couple will have a car. Rented as a short-term unit, two guests usually arrive in one vehicle. Secondly, I think from the standpoint of safety, regulated short-term rentals, regulated ADUs, are in fact, can be made safer. All it requires is careful regulation of smoke alarms, toxic fume alarms, and well-posted and well-explained directions of egress. And thirdly, and I think this is the most important, ADU owners are very much the fabric of the neighborhood that they're in. The ADU is, in fact, my backyard. As much as my neighbors care about it, I care about it more. And the fact that I have an economic interest as well as a social interest makes me even more careful about who I'm going to rent to and how I'm going to monitor that rent when it's going forward. You should know that, for example, for Airbnb and for all the other approaches, we check references very, very assiduously. We exchange emails. We get to know the people and form a compact. We connect. And connecting means that our relationships go far beyond the economic, and our care for our neighborhood goes far beyond the economic. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Lisa Shoemaker signed up here, but I think she was our first speaker. Right? There's not another Lisa? You're right, okay. So then next, I have Helen Powell Bush.
I live in the Five Points neighborhood, and I want to reiterate what the gentleman right before me just said. I don't think I can say it as well as he did, because I'm so nervous. But I will try to. I would like the council to consider postponing the vote tonight until the new council comes on. And if you don't do that, to consider adding ADUs tonight to the ordinance change. I think that's just what he said, and I wanted to reiterate that. Thanks.
So, just one point of clarification, because this is coming up quite a bit, about the concept of expanding the home stay definition to encompass ADUs, which are these basement apartments or garage apartments that are separate dwelling units because of some building code trigger, like they have a stove or whatever the case may be. In order to consider expanding home stay to include ADU, which I, when talking about the shifting of opinion, that is where I've come to rest, that I think we need to look at expanding that definition of home stay to include ADU, would require an ordinance amendment that will have to be reviewed by planning and zoning. So the most we could do tonight is indicate our interest in that expansion, but that'll have to come back through the legally required process to be heard before planning and zoning. And I wasn't opening the discussion quite yet to have, to decide whether we want to move in that direction, but I just wanted to make that clarification so folks understand what we're able to do tonight, what we're not able to do tonight. Okay, so the next person I have signed up to speak is Edward Mordith. Mordith? Hmm. It might be.
Mordith. He left.
He left. Oh, okay. Rita Hayes.
Hi, I'm Rita Hayes. Thank you for having me. I'm in Monford, and I've been living in Asheville, the Asheville area, for over 41 years. I'm a self-employed musician. I've performed in front of most of you and taught many students in the area. When I moved to Monford more than 30 years ago, it was not the beautiful neighborhood it is today. There are prostitutes, crack houses, and constant break-ins. I love the old homes, and I purchased mine from two old ladies who've been operating it as a boarding house, as it has been many times in its history, on the brink of being condemned, though. Over the years, I've been committed to the property and to the neighborhood by renovating and revitalizing the 105-year-old home, despite soaring cost of repairs and maintenance. My home has always been a haven for friends and family needing a place to stay or who have fallen on hard times. I raised my son there, and I've provided rooms for friends and family who needed a place to stay without any remuneration. And currently, I provide a home for a couple of family members who are disabled. I applied for a home stay permit, and I was compliant in every regard. I have the proper square footage, off-street parking and everything, and of course, I live in the house. But I was denied approval because my property line is within 500 feet of the property line of a bed and breakfast that is on another street and a block and a half over. But our backyards are 425 feet from backyard to backyard as the crow flies. The bed and breakfast set a beautiful charm to the area, and I'm proud to be their neighbor. But I believe that there's a way to coexist with home stays such as mine, and their existence should not encumber my ability to use my home how I choose. Many of these bed and breakfasts are themselves not in compliance with current regulations and zoning ordinances, but they've been grandfathered in. I've been in Monford longer than most, if not all of them. I've been in there 31 years. There seems to be little problem putting numerous hotels right next to each other, right down the street from my house. Home stays like mine offer consumers a choice for a different experience as well as a personal touch for visitors in Asheville. And I believe we can help represent the local vibrant and unique scene that we have here. The revenue we could potentially generate would be a huge boon for the local economy and benefit everyone. I love Asheville, and I'm proud of the city that it has become. I realize these are complicated situations that deserve a lot of time and consideration. I personally wish to continue to be a good steward of my neighborhood, and I want to see our neighborhoods thrive. I want to continue to preserve the historic and neighborhood feel of Monford, and the best way to do that is to help those of us who have invested so much in the community over the years to be able to stay. For me, that is having the ability to have a home stay. I believe together we can come up with a reasonable and responsible solution for this issue that will be good for Asheville as well as the people living here. Thank you.
Tell me when you all, I've got another page after this, so just tell me when you're going to do a break. We do have a closed session. Okay? Okay? I'm going to keep going a little bit more. All right, the next speaker is Chris Mado. I probably said that wrong, but, oh, good, okay.
The main reason that I'm standing up here to talk is because I feel another voice supporting a lot of the opinions that you've heard already will make that message stronger. So I don't really have a lot of new to say, so I'm trying to make it very quick. I think there's a burden as being misplaced if we're trying to resolve the issue of affordable housing by placing it on the shoulders of homeowners. A lot of, most of the homes are fairly modest here in Asheville. And if you put us on a continuum with large investors, people building giant hotels, and then you have homeowners, and then you have people in need of affordable housing, I think that we're very close to each other on this continuum, and those large companies are way on the other end. So perhaps, if you want to resolve that burden, if you want to shift some of the weight of the burden, you might want to consider putting some on those who are better apt to help resolve it. In regards to the fabric of neighborhoods comment that's been coming up, I think that the fabric of neighborhoods changes regardless of what happens. It will change. You'll see that, like, I live in West Asheville, and it's changing, and it's not because of home stays, it's because of side streets and taco shops and all kinds of things that create more traffic. I'd rather have the fabric of the neighborhood change in the direction of security for homeowners, while it also changes in the ways that it's going to change naturally. And I'd like to echo what other people have said in regards to respecting the results of the election. So please do indicate your interest to expand this into planning and zoning. We appreciate that, and I'll give up the rest of my time. Thank you very much.
Meg Riley.
Skip.
Skip, skip, okay. Jeff Johnson. All right, now we're rolling. Okay. All right. Tom Gallo.
Well, thanks, guys. It's good to see you. Have you ever heard, it's a great bumper sticker that says, "You're entitled to your own opinion, but you're not entitled to your own facts," okay? This idea that an investor is going to come in, Mr. Hutton bought four or five units, and the other woman had talked about that. I've explained it before, but let me tell you one more time. If you're an owner-operator, your profit is about 80 percent, round numbers, okay? If you're buying a separate property and going to have to have it managed and everything else, your profit is about 20 percent, okay? So, the simple math is that if it's simply a case of making money, buying this unit is not very practical. The real way to make money is you put it in the fidelity contra fund, and that doubled over the last five years. And there's a lot more money being made there for a lot less effort than, you know, putting, say, the same $50,000 into a, you know, buying a home. So, natural selection is going to make it, owner-operator will be the majority. It is the majority now, and it will be, okay? On a couple of other topics, I think you're working on a problem that doesn't exist, okay? I've tried repeatedly in public and private to get information on these complaints. What is the problem? What are the complaints? You know, how many people, how many noise complaints have been issued in the last 12 months? And how many of those complaints were short-term rental-related, and how many was everybody else? You know, this problem, it's like, it's like the voter-fard problem in North Carolina. It's not a problem, but yet the state has spent millions of dollars trying to fix it. You don't, you know, you're not really working on something that's relevant, okay? Or you're simply withholding the evidence from the public, but I think it's not being, I think it's being withheld because it doesn't exist. The best number I got was publicly that there were an average of one complaint a month and had not gotten any information past that. You see more people taking every Friday at the Drum Circle to discuss things with the police, okay, than the home stay complaints. And if it's a whole lot more, why isn't that information being shared with us? Is it a noise issue? Is it a parking issue? Is it a trash issue? It's just, you know, we're not, the data just isn't being shared, and, you know, I think you got to share that, because if you're going to make an informed decision, you guys should be able to answer those questions right now, or don't vote on it until you can. Thank you very much.
Leon Dejornat? I'm, I'm not saying it right, but nonetheless, he is not here? No. Okay. Sue Devitt. Devitt?
Hi, I'm Sue Devitt. I'm in North Asheville.
Try that, try that.
This one? Okay. Much better. I'm Sue Devitt. I'm, I live in North Asheville, and thank you, City Council. Going to read this. I would also ask that the vote be postponed because it seems vague. As an example, one restriction that is vague, and I've asked this at previous council meetings but haven't heard it addressed, and it's the kitchen. What constitutes a kitchen? Is it water and a sink? Is it a microwave? Is it a large refrigerator? I've heard it say that it's the stove. That's the dividing line. But I want to see it in writing because it feels, right now, it feels subjective, which is vague. It feels like it could be the decision of the inspector that comes, and I would like, I would just like them to not have a subjective opinion on it. So, it's been said that the reason- So it's been said that the reason the kitchen is the dividing line is because that is the dwelling that would be taken off of the long-term rental market. But I also know several people that have ADUs on their property, and they do not have kitchens. So I'm wondering, you know, they may have two bedrooms or one bedroom, a studio with a bathroom, but that really wouldn't be taking a long-term rental off of the market. So the ADU thing seems also a little bit vague. Maybe there could be two levels. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. We've heard this council express its commitment to affordable housing. Home stays are certainly a part of the answer. By ridding the city of antiquated laws, you can make it possible for skilled labor, artists, service workers, and even the elderly to be able to continue to afford their homes and continue to contribute to the fabric of Asheville. As you move forward, bear in mind the same opportunities exist for others that happen to have a finished basement, or a room above a garage that was built in the '60s, or a carriage house that has just simply always been there. Accessory dwelling units are a perfect fit for home stays. They're owner-occupied, ample off-street parking by their nature, small footprints make for minimal guests. Home stay landlords are not the bad guys here. The only difference between us and long-term landlords is the difference between day 29 and day 30. To be a landlord, the city does not require a license, a permit, or inspections. The only thing that triggers an investigation is a complaint. We ask that you apply the same rule to home stay landlords and include ADUs. Also, please consider the message you are sending with these permits and inspection requirements, that the sanctuary of tourists are more important than that of our renters.
Lonnie Blake, Blake something. Okay. Sorry. Blake Slate.
Lonnie Blaisley, thank you so much for hearing me. I have not prepared a statement, so forgive my lack of eloquence. I think I would agree with many of the speakers that we should hold our vote until the newly-elected council members are here to participate, as the public has spoken and do share some of the views that those council members have. Also, I am not a property owner. I would love to be a property owner and be an illustrator, licensed North Carolina art educator that is currently not teaching art but is working as a substitute in the city's school system. I will never be able to afford a place where I currently live in Monford if I do not have the ability to be creative about how I make my money, okay? There's some questions I have, and maybe it's lack of understanding of what's been covered tonight about, I live in a one-bedroom apartment, I have to share my apartment with a stranger, I can't rent it out when I go visit my mom. It seems like there's some limitations that are leaving certain constituents in the dust. I think having different levels of what, you know, comprises a home stay might be more effective. Again, maybe there's an issue about whether, you know, you're, I live in my apartment, but as a teacher, I'm not required to be here all summer. I do go, I go back to Massachusetts to work in the summer because I've had my own businesses there, I have contacts there. Can I not rent my apartment because I'm not currently in my house, I'm not sharing the space with a renter? There just seems to be a lot of ambiguity, which puts restrictions on people who are trying to live and work and nurture this community, and then not giving them the freedom to do so. The building I'm living in may not be available for me to live in next year. And if that's the case, I will not be able to afford to live in Monford. I have neighbors that I adore, I walk my dog for two miles every day, all the way around the periphery of the neighborhood. I'm a part of the culture and part of the fabric there. But unless I'm able to find a way to be a part of the home stay collective and it makes it, you make it, you know, to facilitate this, I won't be able to stay in Asheville, let alone Monford. And Asheville will lose so much of the essence of what makes it special if the only people who can come and stay here can afford to pay $400, $500, $600 a night at the Hyatt. The people that attract, the people who are attracted to staying at home stays are not the people who want to stay at the Hyatt. It's a completely different demographic. And it's a demographic that's going to feed the local economy and the people who actually live here. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm a homeowner here in Asheville, and I have a spare room in my house that I'm considering a home stay. I just want to do a reality check. I just spent a week in New Orleans in an Airbnb, and it was the nicest house on the block. It was the best-kept house on the block. But if, if the council thinks that having people in your private space is a capital venture, that you can make a lot of money, that's not true. It's an invasion of your privacy. And the only reason you would do it is to supplement your income. So this whole idea, this fantasy that corporations are going to buy houses, and it just, I don't, I think most of the people here, if you took a survey of the people that are considering home stays, they're homeowners, and they want to supplement their income. And the other thing is, if they're homeowners and they have a room in their house and they can't short-term, they're going to long-term rent the house. So the parking issues are exactly the same, or worse if they long-term rent, because I've had long-term renters that have two cars, one person, two cars. Home stay people usually are coupled with one car. So the parking issue isn't really an issue at all, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thanks. Charlie Soderquist.
I am Charlie Soderquist. I'm a homeowner in Asheville, probably fairly unique to this room. I was born here. I've been here for 67 years. I've owned properties all over the city of Asheville. And this proposal reminds me of the old axiom that says, "Measure it with a micrometer, mark it with a crane, and cut it with an axe." I think you're trying to fix a problem that doesn't exist. I have long-term rental property that is, has been unriddled for over a year because the last renters that were in there tore it all to pieces. And I refuse to re-rent that piece of property because I can't get them out of it. Short-term rentals solve that problem because you don't have to worry about kicking them out, you don't have to go to court to get them evicted, they leave when their time is Asheville needs to decide what they want to do about tourism. Tourism has been the main source of income for this town since I was born, and that was 67 years ago. And I think that all of you need to take a good, hard look at what Asheville should do about the tourist business, and don't move any more hotels in here. You don't have enough parking for all the people downtown now. You're just exacerbating the same problem that, that has a very unique solution in that you can't create enough parking downtown with all that real estate, so spread it out. Home stays, short-term rentals, spread that parking problem out. The average person that comes to Asheville and rents an Airbnb or VRBO spends in excess of $1,000 for that family for that weekend. It's, it's whether you want them to spend the money on hotels or spend the money on small businesses downtown. I'm a small business owner. I would appreciate the tourists coming here and spending money on small businesses. That's the money that gets plowed back into the community. I think this proposal is, is very short, what am I trying to say? It has been thought out very carefully, there, it's very ambiguous. You don't even have the correct definitions for things in there. And I urge you to postpone, table this, and postpone it, and discuss it more when you have more information. Thank you very much.
Okay, Matt Levin.
Hi, I have a, a house in Asheville that I own that I live with my family and my two little boys, and we have two separate apartments that we've been listing separately through Airbnb, and it's been going really well, doing it for a little less than a year. Everything's been going great. Then we got our letter a couple of months ago saying we're going to get a $500 fine per day. So we aggressively moved in to consult with the inspectors and try to modify our home to be compliant with all the new rules. So we've done that. I've applied for the permit to work on my house. I've spent about $1,000 renovating my house to become compliant. And then I've gotten two permits to, one for each apartment. And so this says I can only have one permit, I mean, for two separate apartments. I'm not, I'm not sure how that works. It's a little vague. But as I was filing my final permit, they said that since my house is four feet from my property line, that it's, it needs to be six feet from my property line, so it's not going to be legal. So hopefully, this solves it, so I support the, you know, the non-conforming property. I'd totally support that. It makes sense. I mean, if I got shut down for being two feet short, I think that would be really unfair. But one of my concerns is that, do I still have to pay the $500 a day fine if, if this isn't agreed upon, or if, I'm just not sure how that works. It's not really been clear to me if, if I'm still kind of, if you guys postpone the vote, if you do one of these things, am I still, you know, I put in my permits, and that's taken at least two weeks, and I haven't heard anything. I don't know when the inspections are going to happen. I'm just concerned that, you know, I either pay, I either cancel all my Airbnb things and pay the $50 a day fine, or $50 per cancellation fine, and I'm booked up through March. Do I have to pay that, or do I have to pay the $500 a day fine, or hopefully, nothing? Because our apartments are exactly conforming to all of these things, and we've spent a bunch of money to do it, even though I probably didn't have to. If the 2,500 square feet thing goes through, I probably just wasted that from this process. So I'm just looking for a little clarity on if I submitted my permit on time, does that mean that I'm on hold, the fine is on hold, or, so, that's, that's.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
You said you own two different apartments that are being permitted as home stays. Are you, are you and your family staying in one and renting out rooms?
We stay in a three-bedroom part of the house. There's a, attached to our kitchen, there's a, there's a bedroom with a bathroom. And then we had a, we had cut the house into a duplex, so it had a, its own apartment, you know, separately metered and everything. But we didn't have the 2,500 square feet with that apartment, so we had to blow a hole through the wall so that we then had 2,500 square feet. And so, so we, we currently, you know, because we were doing a long-term before that one long-term, but now to make that legal, we had to put the wall up, and now to make this legal, we had to take the wall down. And so it's a bit, I'm trying hard to make it legal and be above board, but.
You might encourage us to vote on something tonight.
Well, the eligibility thing and the.
Right, otherwise, we're stuck with the status quo.
Yeah. Can you answer my question about the, am I going to have to pay the fine?
Well, I, we don't know, because we haven't done anything yet tonight. But I think the staff has, as Shannon stated, a backlog of folks either in your situation or wanting to come online with new home stays, and it's all sort of pending an outcome of tonight. So we hear people asking us to postpone the vote, but I, we'll have to have that discussion up here.
Yeah, I mean, I see this as a stopgap until there's another bigger vote, maybe that does the.
Right, as I mentioned, we can't do ADUs tonight at all.
Yeah, yeah. Mine, I mean, mine fits perfectly except for, you know, if they, if they don't, if they don't sign off on my thing, on my permit, do I, do I have to pay my fine in two weeks?
We tailor-made ordinances. No, I don't, I, I, we're going to have to discuss tonight whether we're considering it, and then, and then.
Give staff time.
The staff will be able to go, take it from there. I have three more people signed up to speak. The first is Rita Hayes. You've already spoke, I'm sorry. Oh, I have you on, oh, I think your husband was being helpful. I'm sorry. And next is David Rogers.
Do you dive headfirst into murky water without knowing how deep the water is? I hope not. Mayor Manheimer said at the last home stay meeting, "This is a new phenomenon. We don't know. This isn't something to mess up." I agree, and I hope you all are as rational as our mayor. Let's not dive in headfirst quite yet. The mayor also pointed out how San Francisco, with their enormous staff of lawyers, got this issue wrong the first time. What makes you confident that this draft is the best that it can be? Please consider piloting whatever rules you want to adopt on a small scale. Pick a neighborhood to try it out for a year. The mayor also pointed out that whatever rules get approved will not be easily undone. If you find out a year from now that there are significant changes that you would like to make, you may not be able to undo the worst offenses. Folks buying property and setting up businesses based on what you approved tonight will most likely be granted a non-conforming use and continue to operate even if you want them to stop. Let's limit the risk. Let's test the waters in just one neighborhood. You know what strikes me as odd in all of this is that once a business is set up and established, the zoning changes they get generally keep on going. They usually get non-conforming uses. What about my rights? All I want is to live adjacent to neighbors, not transient tourists. I specifically bought a small home on a small lot, knowing the zoning, to avoid living next to a hotel. I am surrounded by residential zoning. I truly thought I was safe. I specifically did not buy a house one street over because it is adjacent to commercial. Now anyone and everyone with a credit card can have a front-row seat to watch my little girl and boy and their friends play in their backyards. This is not what I signed up for. It's creepy. I guess the days of letting kids run around naked are over unless you want tourists watching them. How do you reconcile this on your ledger? How do you reconcile this on your ledger of fairness? Where can people buy homes not adjacent to nightly rentals? Ideally, as you know from my email and discussions with you, I'd like you to leave the home stay ordinance unchanged. This seems unlikely, so at the very least, please put some limits in place. Maintaining the 500 separation, 500-foot separation requirement seems wise unless you really want to have every house on the street doing this. Is this really what you want? I'll wrap up with some final words from the mayor's last meeting here. This we cannot get wrong. We have got to get it right. If we get it wrong, it could be like you go to the beach and every single house is a rental, nobody knows each other. But what is it? It's not a, it's just a resort community. That's all it is. It's not a community, it's not a place where people raise their children. And I know there are a lot more homeowners like me who didn't show up. There are a lot of people here who have monetary interests in making money off their homes. I wish they would just have a roommate or another tenant in their house. Thanks.
Catherine Smith. Nope, no. And then maybe Lorne or Isley? It's very hard to read this name. Starts with an L. Is there anyone whose name starts with an L that has not spoken that signed up to speak?
It was the last person to sign up.
Last person, signed up at 7:30. Okay. Oh, does your name start with an L? All right. There you go. All right.
It works.
Good enough.
What are the odds?
My name starts with an L. I'm Lori Fisher, and I'm just here to, I don't know, validate what I've been listening to downstairs. Isn't so many good. Isn't so many good points brought up here? It's like this whole program is cutting butter with a chainsaw. Is there really a homestay problem? I think not. There may be a parking problem. There might be an affordable housing problem. But these are not caused by homestayers. These are caused by many other bigger things in our economy, including lots of big hotels that take up a lot of real estate that could be used for affordable housing. I also think it's unfair to penalize homestay tenants or not penalizing the long-term landlords for the same thing. That does seem unfair to make the short-term homeowner jump through a lot more hoops than the long-term homeowner. It's all going to be a person parked there, people using their homestay, using their own real estate, their own passive income, their own resources, without adding another footprint or anything of, you know, development to here. That's really a big problem. So I just encourage you to please table this, rethink the whole thing. I mean, I don't think really there should be anything at all except using all this information for a handbook for complaints that might come in. That would be the best use for all these regulations. If a complaint comes in versus parking or noise or any of these things or building code violations, these laws are in place. They can be handled with a person with a complaint. So I have a nice handbook here for the complaint-based homestay. But if there's no complaint, I suggest leave all the entanglement behind, worrying about people's kitchens and their stoves and their five foot here or two feet there. Is there not a much better use of the city's efforts than haranguing all these little details for something that I really believe is not a problem? It's not the source of the problem. If you want the more better housing and all that stuff, look in other areas. It's not homeowners trying to be able to afford to live here. I've lived here for almost 40 years. Many people have already left. There's only one gentleman I heard tonight who said he was born here. Everybody else has moved here. This is all part of the joy, success, and problem of parking in Asheville now that lots more people live here. So, I mean, homestays are not the cause of that either. They're lovely solutions. So I encourage you all very much to really just consider dropping this whole homestay regulation, focus on complaints, and let the market and the people and the good citizens of Asheville and the good guests who come stay with us handle this on our own without interference, which feels very draconian from the city to come measure all these things. So that's goodbye, and I think I'm the last one, so hooray.
That's right. That is the last person I had signed up to speak, but that doesn't mean if you haven't already spoken and you haven't already waived your time and you're feeling compelled to speak on this topic, now is your opportunity. Is there anyone else who didn't have an opportunity that would like to speak? Ta-da. Okay. We had a number of questions that came up, and maybe we need to address those as best we can before we do anything else. Is that all right? I wrote down a couple of things. Does anyone else have a... The... One of the questions I heard was what, you know, trying to parse out what the proposal is saying about how present the resident must be at the home or apartment or whatever it is. And maybe while Shannon's looking for that... Oh, you got it. Okay.
This is the revised language up here that's being proposed, and I'll just read it for those who may have a little bit of trouble. It's right here. The homestay operation shall be managed and carried on by a full-time resident of the property who shall be present and residing in the home when lodgers are present. Present and residing in the home means the full-time resident shall not be staying overnight outside the home for reasons such as vacation, visiting with friends or family, or traveling out of town for business or personal reasons. Temporary absences related to normal residential activities such as shopping, working, attending class, et cetera, are permitted. Three or more documents establishing proof of residency shall be supplied from an approved list of documents.
One of the other questions was about the three forms of identification. Is that... Where does that... Is that based on some other precedent? Or is that just sort of selected as...
Well, it is not uncommon in other... It's just sort of a best practice that people who are applying for these... Because we are requiring that the person live in the home, so we need some sort of proof that they actually live in that home and that they're not just the person filling out an application form. We think more than one piece of evidence is better, you know, just because it's, you know, easily enough to put a utility in your name and take it out. So we need something a little bit more substantial.
I think one very potent point that was made by a couple of the speakers or a few was the idea that we're addressing a problem that doesn't exist. If we've only had a violation a month up until, say, August, or whenever someone turned in, 43 people, if that's been the rate of problems reported, what exactly is the problem we're addressing now? I'm not quite clear on that.
Well, and that, to be fair, that was somewhat rhetorical to Shannon, because we're addressing the problem, but if there is a problem. But could you tell us about the number of complaints? Or how many folks do you have that are sort of in this gentleman's position where they could be in violation? They've received a letter, they're waiting to hear what happens tonight? And how many people haven't started this yet are waiting to bring this?
I'm going to invite Shannon Murray, who's the enforcement officer who's handled most of these. He may have better numbers. I'm not exactly sure of the numbers.
Mayor and council, we have about 30 to 40 active notice violations. Large majority of those have been given extensions based off tonight's meeting to see what comes of it. Once we decide on that, then I guess there'll be a decision as to whether or not those individuals have to come into compliance. Coming into compliance would be ceasing the operation altogether, changing the website, or, you know, if there's a decision tonight, then they can file for a permit.
That's not my question, though. I want... Yeah. Before the current enforcement effort started last year, the year before, how many times were we having complaints about short-term rentals? How many? I'm looking for the problem we were trying to solve when we started enforcing like we had then.
I don't know that we have the exact numbers, because not every complaint turns into a case. So a lot of times we may investigate and find that there is really no issue. You know, it was a misunderstanding, and it gets resolved. Other times we get... We have individuals who come into compliance very quickly. It's just a notification, and we just make contact. So I don't know that we have those exact numbers. And I think, you know, if we say one a month, I'm not sure if that's really accurate. I mean, I think it varies. You know, we may have kind of a wave of complaints, and then it's quieter period of time, and then we may have another wave.
But, okay, what I'm trying to get to here is we have had 16 or 18 permits issued since 2005. Now, when you say that when there's a complaint, they come into compliance, that would mean if it was not a registered homestay, that they then got a permit. So, right? So 18? I mean, over...
The very large majority of the complaints are for illegal STRs. For the illegal whole-house, vacation rental. It's not the people who are... I mean, it's a very small percentage that are actually coming. It was one of the reasons we felt comfortable with homestays being compatible in a neighborhood environment is because having the owner there, we just don't have the nuisance issues with them. It's the illegal short-term rental that generates most of the complaints.
So what I'm leading to there is how much do we want, as a council here, I'm not talking to staff, do we want to regulate something that hasn't been causing a problem? What's the problem?
But I guess, you know, what I feel like we've done, Cecil, is we're trying to make it easier to comply with homestays. So in general, I feel like we're loosening up the requirements. I mean, you know, we're taking away the 2,500 square feet. We're defining it a little bit more. So I feel like it's kind of letting... We're trying to get people out of the dark and into the light kind of thing with this, that in general, we're loosening up the homestay regulations. So...
But we're also dealing with however many hundred people were doing it who mostly, and from what I've heard, didn't even know it was illegal. They didn't know they had to have a permit. So we're making it easier for them to do something they didn't have to do before and that there was no problem with.
Well, theoretically, they did.
A guy in my neighborhood has been... I mean, there's a home in my neighborhood who's been doing it for a couple of years. I had no idea it was going on there until this conversation occurred. He had no idea he needed a permit.
Well, I mean, this is definitely an emerging phenomenon. I mean, two years ago, I hadn't heard of Airbnb.
Right.
So, I mean, I think that what we're seeing from even the most progressive cities across the nation, and the gentleman who did a good synopsis of these other cities, which we have had time to review and study as well, Austin, San Francisco, Portland, they all have some process in place. They have some permitting threshold. And, you know, I have asked myself that question. Why do we need to regulate this at all? Why can't people just do what they want with their home? And I might end up in that place eventually, but I don't know that is where I would want to take our initial step in expanding this pretty antiquated ordinance that's on the books that was clearly drafted back in the days of boarding houses. I mean, it didn't contemplate Airbnb at all. So I'm not... What I would like, and why I asked Shannon about the experience of the person applying for a permit, I want that to be smooth and easy as possible for someone seeking to do a homestay with their property and not hear some arbitrary response like, "Well, your setback is two feet, you know, off, and your property's not in compliance." I'm interested in making that as smooth as possible. And I think that was a really good discussion about what these other cities require in the permitting process. In terms of the process for tonight, as I've mentioned, right now, we have the amendments to the homestay ordinance proposed before us. We cannot consider ADUs tonight, and we're not considering STRs tonight. And even if we were, it would have to go back through planning and zoning. We've heard a number of people say that they want us to wait. What I would say is there's going to hopefully be more. But I'm concerned about those that are eager to get going with homestays that, for some reason, maybe their house is smaller than 2,500 square feet, or, you know, they're running into one of these restrictions that we have that we've been trying to address. So I don't know what you all feel about that, but I'm kind of eager to at least do something tonight and then explore the opportunity to do something more later. So to that end, I have a couple of comments, and I've tried to talk to Robin ahead of this to understand procedurally what we need to do to adopt this tonight. And she advises, "Do not go one by one and have a motion on each item," but she would try to keep track of if we want to make adjustments to the proposal.
I think you can discuss them one by one. I just don't... I would not advise voting on them one by one.
Correct. So we probably... We all have this chart that's up here. Shannon, can you pull the proposed language off? So we have the chart in front of us. We have copies of these at our desk. You know, just some thoughts that occurred to me as I was hearing this. I think the three forms of identification are onerous. I can see how, you know, there would be a concern about just one form of identification because it isn't that difficult to get a utility bill in your name and not actually... You know, there might be some confusion there. Maybe require two forms of ID. I don't know if that's a trigger for anybody. I, you know, I have some concern about the 25% just because it sounds like it's sort of bureaucratic to have to map out your house and figure out what's 25%. I'd be comfortable just saying three bedrooms, and that way, you know, maybe we could forego that exercise. The, you know, obviously, some of these other things make sense. The off-street parking requirement, to me, is, you know, again, I think where we're seeing some of this activity tends to be in our older neighborhoods, and a lot of folks don't have off-street parking. I mean, I lived in Norwood Park when I was in high school, and there, you know, there's shared driveways. There's all kinds of different, unique setups for different houses, and that seems challenging to make that a requirement. And I'm not inclined to make off-street parking a requirement. The accessory structure... So this is not the ADU. This is like the garage apartment that doesn't have the stove or whatever the heck the trigger is that makes it a separate dwelling unit, right? The accessory structure...
Accessory structures would include the garage apartment that you just described.
But it's...
But it does not include, like, a basement area that is connected to the main house.
So I, again, I worry about the, you know, all of our housing is so unique, especially in our older neighborhoods. It's so hard to anticipate what everyone's home situation and their setup's going to be. I worry that this will seem pretty arbitrary to some people unless I'm missing what it means.
Accessory structure is essentially that detached accessory unit. It's an ADU.
Well, it says... Right now, it says accessory structure.
Right.
And then dwelling unit. So this is encompassing an accessory structure that doesn't have a kitchen in it.
That's what I thought it meant. So you could have a detached garage, like a room over a garage, but didn't have a kitchen or anything in it. It was just a room, right? Would this allow you to rent that out or not allow you to rent that out?
It would not.
It would not allow you to rent that out?
Our... The proposed ordinance would not. I would argue that our current ordinance doesn't allow it either, but...
I guess what I'm saying is I think that those should be allowed to be rented out. So I get that we can't get into ADUs tonight.
Well, if you sleep in a... If you sleep in a room that is not attached to the house, that would have to be a single-family residence or an ADU or a short-term rental. So what you're describing can't really be done without being an independent housekeeping unit.
Is that because of the way our ordinance is drafted, not because of the building code or something like that?
No, it's the building code.
So...
And our ordinance. If you create a room that's not part of your main house and people sleep in it, then that has to become... Then in order to be able to sleep in it, it has to be a dwelling unit. You have a basement bedroom because it's attached to the main house. It's just one bedroom in a house. If you create a bedroom that's not in a house, I mean, you can't do that. You can't have a bedroom that's not in a house.
Well, okay. Yeah, well, so I don't want to get down in the weeds here, but I guess what I was trying to understand is, you know, there are people that have garage rooms over their garage, and it's just maybe a bedroom and a bathroom because they're... But it's detached.
If it is attached and connected to the house, no problem. If it is detached, you cannot do it. It cannot be a bedroom. It could be a studio. It could be storage. It can be these things. It cannot be a bedroom.
Will you allow people to use it as a homestay?
No.
People can't sleep in a studio?
You cannot sleep in a studio. You can only sleep in a bedroom.
Yeah, we could. I could address it in the ADU if...
It's an ADU. It is what she's saying. It's an ADU.
Well... Or what you're describing is not legal, is really what it is, is it may exist. People may have them, but they're not legal.
And just to be clear, because I think we're kind of getting a little muddy here, is that that is true under state building code as well as under our ordinance.
It's driven by state building code.
Yes, it's driven by state building code.
Okay. Well, everybody who's doing that, guess what? We learned something new tonight. I did not know that. I think that... Hopefully, we could capture that in the ADU discussion. I'd be anxious to do that tonight, but if we can't do it, that will be surprising, I think, to some people. The, you know, the limit to the bedroom, to three bedrooms, probably seems reasonable for the average house in Asheville. That probably won't prohibit most people from making the full use of their house. And if we're to get rid of the 25% requirement, we'll need something in there to stop it from becoming a boarding house or whatever the case may be. I know Robin warned us there was a case on the coast where someone had a homestay with 26 bedrooms in it. So, I mean, it's reasonable to have some limitation to it. to it. Right?
Only a lot more. You just text it out.
One question I had was the requirement of insurance. I kind of... I mean, it sounds like other cities are doing that, and maybe that's not terribly unreasonable, but I don't know why we get into whether or not somebody has insurance. Is there some other technical reason why, you know, a lot of... If someone has a mortgage, their bank's going to require them to have insurance. It's sort of between them and their guest whether I would want to stay in a place that had insurance. But do we need to play a part in whether or not someone has insurance? Is there a thinking behind that?
I think it's up to you. I think the thinking was that you would be assuring the guest's safety and ability to pay for any damages or accidents, whether should they occur. I think that showing the policy or even just filling out and saying yes, I think that we decided that it wouldn't be that hard of a burden, but just to make sure that they were covered. And sometimes, I think that the deal was, is if your insurance company doesn't know that you're doing that, that there could be potentially not coverage for some sort of injury for the guest or the tenant, and they could deny coverage for that, and so it would be a protection.
I didn't hear anyone complain about that provision. I just was curious about it. And finally, the non-conforming properties being eligible for this is very important to us. I think that, you know, whatever percentage Shannon was saying of properties are non-conforming because they predate when we adopted the UDO. Not we. We did not adopt the UDO. Maybe Jan did. Were you here?
No.
Ouch!
You saved.
Sorry. 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 So, you know, I know we... It was funny. Somebody said something tonight about don't rush to judgment, but I feel like we probably haven't vetted one issue more than we have vetted this one. And it is complex, and it does warrant some pretty close study. And my, you know, my thinking about it has evolved, but one of the things that has remained a concern to me is the integrity of the neighborhood, balancing what makes Asheville special but allowing people the opportunity to make their living experience more affordable. And I hope that by expanding homestay usage to be as user-friendly as possible while still prohibiting whole-house, short-term rentals, we're going to try to strike that balance that these other cities have tried to define, the San Franciscas and the Austins and the Portlands, because we do share a cool factor with them. And as a result, we are feeling that pressure of people coming here and the need for housing and the need for folks living here to be able to subsidize their own incomes. So, I want to strike that balance and want the folks that want to do homestays to be able to have a smooth experience through our permitting process, not feel like they were turned away for some arbitrary reason or some fix that costs $100,000 to retrofit your home. I want... Personally, it's important to me that that be a smooth process. And I appreciate all of you sticking it out here for so long, and some of you have been to multiple hearings on this issue.
I would concur with the suggestions you just made, which were to strike the 25%, include three, up to three bedrooms, strike the parking requirement, and I think those are the three main ones you just...
Two forms of ID. Two forms of ID.
And the 25%. And move to approve those changes.
Can I...
Mr. Tufa's for you.
Yeah, I want to go through it if we can before we actually, if you don't mind. Gwen's talking first.
Well, if the mayor recognizes me. I almost would flip the 25% in the bedroom thing. I mean, for me, well, if you make the argument, which Cecil made earlier, about the economics of, you know, you... Of this idea that a company could come in and buy five houses, and they buy four-bedroom houses, now economically, it does make sense to, you know, let a tenant come in and spend below, you know, pay below market rent, which I guess is good for affordable housing. But I guess I would almost switch it back to say, there should be some limit to the total percent of the house and not worry about counting the bedrooms. So, again, just trying to approach this from the standpoint of it really being the homeowner or the tenant who is economically advantaged by this as opposed to availing companies from doing it. So, that would be my... Other than that, I'm okay with what you said.
What about the other things?
The other things, I'm fine, but that, I would just flip that.
There?
Are you saying that...
There.
So, this is... We can't do that where you call out, but we'll try to work through this process, and I've got other council members that want to make remarks. Remember, this is... There's like, I don't know how many people watch this show every other week, but I think it's a lot of people. Yeah, Cecil watches it. But they can't see you at home if you speak from the audience, so.
Thanks, Esther. I think that the biggest mistake we can make is to pretend that this is an uncomplicated problem. This is a very, very complicated problem, and maybe the most complicated thing that we've addressed since I've been on council. I think that people justifiably want to have this use, and I think that people justifiably are concerned about this use. I think that owners of properties deserve this consideration, and I think renters deserve consideration. Property rights versus residential zoning, individual needs versus community needs. I really appreciated the mayor a moment ago saying that it's our job up here, and Jan earlier and Chris earlier, talking about that we are doing a balancing act up here and that it's important that we strike a balance and that we not fall at either extreme. This tonight is about opening up homestay options for more people here in the city. That's what this is doing. The old ordinance was far too restrictive. I think that it does create a fundamental change in our neighborhoods, what we're doing here. I think this is a very important and a very big thing that's happening, and I don't want to minimize it in any way. We are saying that we are going to permit tourists, businesses in our neighborhoods. That's happening tonight. That is not a small thing. That's a very, very big thing. So, let's not pretend it's not. I really appreciate your list of things, Esther, and I can't believe me and Esther and Cecil are coming in on the same on this. This is fantastic. I like doing away with the percentage and going with the two bedrooms. I like doing away with the parking requirement.
You said three bedrooms.
Oh, you said three?
Yeah.
Well, okay. I was preferring the two, but we can burn that bridge when we come to it. I'll also mention that our Affordable Housing Advisory Committee does advise against STRs, use of ADUs, but supports the homestay use. So, there is this recognition that this is providing affordable housing for people. So, just so everyone knows, there's this broad recognition of that. No one's denying that that's serving that purpose for a lot of people. I will say this, though. As people were talking, I was also checking... I was checking out these cities they were naming. Portland just called their housing in a state of emergency just this last week. Their housing crisis is now a state of emergency. Austin has a crisis. New Orleans just had an article out saying illegal short-term rentals caused our housing crisis. This is in New Orleans. Katrina just happened 11 years ago. Bloomberg Business writes, "The Rise of Airbnb Full-Time Landlords." Slate just wrote, "How Airbnb Forces Up Housing Prices." This is basic supply and demand economics, folks. If there's less supply and there's high demand, prices go up. This is not arguable. That being said, I think that we do have to strike a balance here tonight and allow these owners who are seeking to make Asheville affordable for themselves to have that shot. And so, this is that balance. This is the compromise, is coming in on the homestay piece. So, I get hot about this stuff because it's just so big and important. And thanks, Esther, for trying to strike a balance.
Just real quick. Gordon, thank you. You reflect what I'm feeling about the magnitude of this question very much so. And Esther, the suggestions for revising this, I agree and feel strongly about that. The only one that remains that I still have a problem with is the home occupations allowed concurrently. I just think it's too vague right now, and I do believe that there's many people that work at home that has a very low impact on the community there and that, you know, if I had my druthers, I'd like to just pull that entirely unless we have some very specific defined home occupations that we do not want to do concurrently with the homestays.
I don't disagree with that.
Mayor, I think the question and the challenge for this city council and the next one has to do with the question of whether we want to allow commercial enterprises into residential neighborhoods. All the people that we've heard from tonight, and many that we've gotten emails from that are supportive of expanding the homestay, are owners, typically owners, very few are renters that are trying to operate homestays and are looking out for their own opportunity to supplement income to make life more affordable here. And everybody that's spoken tonight is absolutely supportive of that. What I think we need to be careful is crafting ordinance provisions that would allow de facto STRs to occur under our ordinance. And I've got concerns with the draft that we've got now. I don't believe, based on conversations earlier tonight about our inability to limit multiple property ownership by one financial interest. Yeah, technically, we say one person, one permit, but it was made clear a few minutes ago that a creative investor can own multiple properties, unlimited number technically under this ordinance, and put free rent operators in those that are the nominal permit holder and operate them. The economics of a three-bedroom homestay look a little like this. $50 a night times three bedrooms, $150 per night total, times 200 nights per year is $30,000. That same property might rent on a long-term basis for, what, $1,500 to $2,000 a month. And so, the revenue levels are dramatically different between what could potentially happen here. And we have heard... Again, let me emphasize. The people expressing interest here are owners that want an edge for themselves in this market, in this economy. If the ordinance is able to be interpreted by clever, smart investors that can make money on buying a $250,000 or $300,000 house and grossing $30,000 a year, they will do it. And when we hear that Austin, when we hear that Austin took the step to try to liberalize and do something good for the community, and now they've exploded and had to impose a, what was it, a year and a half-long moratorium, that there is risk of that. And I don't... I haven't heard anybody up here tonight, I haven't heard anybody in the community say, "I want commercial enterprises in our neighborhoods." I agree with Jane Matthews and Mr. Alford and a couple of other, David Rogers and a couple of other people that point out that the integrity of community life in our neighborhoods is really important here. It is... It's actually one of the most important features of zoning regulation. And so, I also believe that affordability is at stake. Realize that we've got an environment here where STRs are illegal and homestays are very limited. So, we haven't seen the activity of creative investors at any scale. When Austin lifted the lid and when Duluth, Minnesota, which was pointed to a couple of months ago as a model ordinance, lifted the lid, they immediately turned around and imposed moratoriums because when we lift the lid and if it's inadvertent and we allow creative investors that are not residents owning the home, sharing their own home with people, the economy will dictate, and it will evolve. It always does. The economic opportunity of return on investment always prevails. And I'm not saying anybody in this room is out to do that, but I'm saying that if the opportunity is there, it will happen. So, Mayor, I cannot support ordinance changes that do not include either, well, start with a two-bedroom maximum, either a 500-foot minimum separation or a maximum of 100 nights per year. And I think that, you know, based on the thinking and research I've done on the economics of homestay, if we go beyond that level, we're inviting the clever investors to come in and start taking up housing stock and hollowing out our neighborhoods. So, that's where I am.
Does everyone have a chance before we go back over? Jan, did you?
I would agree with Chris on the... I think we should give some more thought to the owner of...
Owner business?
Yeah, another business in the dwelling because I know there's some out there.
The home occupation.
Yeah, home occupation.
Yeah, what I... One more thing I was thinking about is that the demand for this is not infinite, first of all. I mean, if everyone turned their house into a homestay, a lot of them would be empty a lot of the time. I mean, the market does control things that way. As for the concern that... And I hope that our rule, a rule about one per owner will help control it, but if someone comes in and buys 10 homes and makes 10 four bedrooms and puts a person for almost no rent in as a resident manager, you've just created 10 affordable housing units. I mean, those 10 people are getting cheap rent for doing their job. So, I mean, it has another side to it as well. I really think that... I really think we need to go forward because of the enforcement that's going on. Or, if we're going to postpone and think about it longer, I would want to see a stay on all of the enforcement about this until then, until we get it right.
I haven't heard anyone say, "Let's postpone." Is that a... Is that...
No, I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, we're... Okay. Okay, just one quick thing I wanted to cover. I heard Chris say he was okay with loosening up the home occupation restriction. Well, not imposing, you know, not preventing homestays where there's already a home occupation. And I heard Jan say that. I am in agreement with that as well. I just...
I am too.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure we had consensus on that. And then, the other one I wanted to see if there was any consensus around was the bedroom limitation or the square footage limitation. It sounds like there is consensus about maybe not having both as a requirement, but which one we go with. Gwen, I think what you said was fairly persuasive. You know, I'm open to suggestion on that one. I didn't really want to speak to that, but...
Or maybe instead of 25%, maybe it's 40%. I mean, I don't want to get into, you know, drawing and, you know, measuring out, but something that, again...
Is it 25% or three bedrooms? I mean, did you choose which one?
Well, allow me to create a possible solution here. We are not going to get this perfect tonight. It's not going to happen. So, what I would suggest is that we come forward with as close to consensus as we can get with a provision within this motion that I'm about to make that would review this in four months, in eight months, and in 12 months. I know. I know it's painful.
No, I love public hearing.
But while we are in... While we're in a place where I think everyone's acknowledging that this is a fast-moving train, we don't know exactly what it's going to do, and we're seeing all over the country... I just went to the National League of Cities Conference in Nashville, and these were mayors and elected officials from all over the country. And this was what I asked them about. Everyone I met, I asked them about, "What are you doing with STRs and homestays?" They had different names for them in some places, but we used to talk about Airbnb. Every single person I talked to, their city had a different solution. All of them. It was amazing. I couldn't believe it. At the How to Regulate Airbnb forum hosted by Airbnb...
That's not a joke. That's... Uber is also a host.
It actually happened. The mayor of Santa Monica stood up and yelled at how they were tearing his city apart. And it's not because he's making it up. Because it's happening. So, be aware that this is having different effects in different places, and different places are trying different things, and we are going to be among the experimenters in this new economy. new economy. I don't call it a sharing economy because it's commerce, it's not actually sharing.
So, Gordon, with that, just on that...
Don't do the whole motion yet. Tell us about the 25 three-bedroom thing.
Okay. I, I'd like to make this, at this point, as user-friendly as possible. I think the percentage requirement is fairly arbitrary. The bedroom thing is a little more straightforward. I think it's easier to use. I'd prefer it and to go with the two.
Two, and not the percentage?
Right.
I think C is what I'm coming down to.
I think we might have a majority.
Okay. I just want to avoid the drawing of picture of your house and the, right, I mean...
I hate to open this Pandora's box.
Oh, God.
Oh, no.
But I won't be here to, yeah.
You'll be here in four months, nine months, and 12 months.
Yeah, I, I think a concern that, that I have, I mean, we're, we're getting ready to do something that's pretty dramatically different than where we were three or four months ago. And Cecil brought up early on when he was advocating, and I agreed with him, that there, there should be some rules in place for the bad actors that this thing happens with. I, I feel really bad to, to listen to the people, there's two sides to this argument and in fact, there's multiple sides, but I, I do feel like there should be some clawback on this that we can go to if it doesn't work. This is a grand experiment. There are a lot of people already running these, these rentals in the, in the community now. We don't really see much of them and that's a good thing, but I think that the, and I'm, I've never been pleased with complaint-driven stuff, but since we're doing enforcement, I think we really need, we can't do it tonight, but I think we need to set about saying, "What are the rules out there? What if someone does have these rentals that turn into weekend parties and repeated? What hap, how do we, how do we justify what we've done to this coalition of actual neighborhoods?"
Yeah, we ought to be able to rescind the permit if there's multiple...
There should be that ability. So I, I think we need to add that part to it. Now, whether we're in such a hurry to get this done tonight that we don't do that, that's okay, but I think that it's got to be done very soon.
This is apart from the enforcement?
Right, it's, it's...
This is the nuisance piece, if there's some...
Yeah, okay.
And so when Gordon talks about looking at this in four and eight months, 12 months, that can be on the list of questions, whether is it time to look at...
And are we hearing complaints?
Right.
That's what I was thinking, is we need to know the number of permits issued, number of complaints received, and then just staff concerns that aren't gonna be on our radar necessarily, just things that come up for you that you're gonna learn over the course of this process. There's a, there's a lot of learning to do.
I, I like that idea. I mean, the idea that like we're gonna re-look at it, but I guess I'm trying to figure out when you're talking about land use and somebody has spent $20,000 to be compliant with this and then a year later we say, "Oh, we were only kidding."
It's not about only kidding, it's about if it develops into a crisis.
Right, but so I think if, if we're gonna propose something like that, and I don't disagree, I think we have to make it very clear to people that this may get changed because of what we're seeing, what we're seeing in other cities. And so every time a permit is issued, you kind of, you say, "This, this will be reviewed within X number of months, beware."
And I...
Not that it, it would necessarily be changed, but especially when it comes to land use and people buying property or, or investing in their property, I think we just need to make it very clear that this isn't necessarily in stone. I don't disagree.
Yeah, yeah.
Sort of a warning.
Whether the proponents' arguments are borne out, we will determine.
We will figure that out.
I do think that the cities that have declared moratoria on, have been on issuing new permits. That's what Duluth did. I mean, they, they stopped issuing new permits to put a lid on. And then we could do that and, and by attrition, you know, we could drop the number and, I mean, because people quit and people get, yeah.
Should I give this a shot?
So you, yeah, you, you're going with the two-bedroom, Nick's the percentage and...
Okay, these are two ordinances, okay? You've got the definition that has the number of bedrooms. That is not in your USSR, okay? So I want to make sure that whatever you're doing, that, that we're following, and we got about five pieces of paper here. So I would think if your motion has to do with the, with the two bedrooms, that you could make that as being an amendment to the definition portion and use your comp plan consistency there and get that done, and then we can move to the, to the USSR. Because this, this definition is going to apply every homestay, whether it is in a district that it's a USSR or a district by right.
I'll, I'll be as clear as I can and we can, we can clean it up.
Alternatively, I mean, should, okay, you...
I mean, are we saying that we need to stop so the attorney can write up a, a motion here? I'd just rather make a motion.
We did, we did talk about that, whether we could take a break so she could properly drop it, but...
Well, I think, yeah, let's just see how you do and we'll clean it up. I just want to make sure that they don't, that they don't mix up because there's the one that USSR and there's the one definition section.
So should we do the bedroom?
Limits of...
I, I think so.
So Gordon, if we could do the, the bedroom one first?
Fair enough. I move to add to the definition and the other thing that Robin said, to strike the 25% provision and have the two-bedroom max.
And to amend the definition in otherwise in accordance with what the planning and zoning recommendation is.
What she said.
Do I have a second?
Wait a minute, one more thing, I'm sorry, and find that the request is reasonable.
And find that request is reasonable.
And in the public interest.
Let me pull it up here. I assume this is written down. And find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plan in the following ways. By expanding an existing economic opportunity to more residents of Asheville, by developing zoning standards that regulate activities that promote, I'm not gonna say that one, and I'm not gonna say the third one, I'm just saying the first one.
Will that do?
That will do.
I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
I want to make sure I understand how we're splitting this. What are the other elements that would be considered in a different motion?
Okay, in your, there was a, a black line that was put in, at your place there?
Oh, I, I was going off the old...
Okay, if you go to the last page of that, and I'm not trying to get too technical, this is just very complicated, I want to make sure it gets down exactly as it should be. If you, you see it has a homestay definition?
Yes, we're just voting on that one page.
That one page, and if you see the, the changes that are written in there now, that's the P and Z changes to the existing ordinance, and if you see the three guest rooms, that would be just changed to two.
Okay.
Okay.
How are we doing?
You did it.
There was a second?
There was a second. Ready? Do you want to talk about this some more? Can we vote on this one? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now, the multi-part motion.
Multi-part motion.
This is the only other motion we need on this, right?
Correct, and, and I would suggest that you work off the P and Z recommendation, which is the black line in front of you.
Which is?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Well, I, I'll take a stab at this and please, council, correct me if I, I get anything incorrect. We thought the issue was complicated. The motion is just as complicated. I move to approve the current ordinance with P and Z commission recommendations, striking, however, off-street parking requirement and allowing for the home occupation.
That's pretty neat.
Striking the 25%.
Oh, I have to do that one again? Striking the 25% and having the two-bedroom maximum in this as well.
And are we adding in the eligibility for the non-conforming properties?
Yes, that...
That was built into the...
Yeah, that's Q, right? No, that's not in the P and Z.
Oh, okay, yes, and adding in the non-conforming properties.
Okay, and then, I can, let me summarize what I think you want. How about that?
Thanks, Robin.
Okay, if you want to start at the beginning, that you would want to move to approve the P and Z recommendations with the following amendments. As to subsection C, which talks to the full-time resident, would you like to add the recommended language except that only two forms of identification are required as opposed to three?
Yes.
With respect to the 25% at subsection D, you would strike that.
Yeah.
Okay. With respect to the off-street parking in subsection F, you would strike that entirely. Okay, as to subsection...
Well, F, no, no off-street parking is currently, it's already in there.
Right.
Off-street parking is not required in the proposed order.
Right, there is no off, off-street parking.
So there's no change there?
No change.
Wait a minute.
Well, the one that's at our desk says it has no struck through and then it's...
Right, we're working, we're working off the P and Z.
Off the P and Z recommendations.
Right.
To, to box in, this is the...
Yes.
Okay, with respect to accessory structures, you would strike that limitation. There wouldn't be any reference to accessory structures or dwelling units in this, correct?
Separate, that's a...
Correct, so we won't, we're not gonna talk about it here. Okay, there is an addition, only one per, per parcel, you would want that.
Yeah, we didn't even...
Okay, as to subsection, it looks like J, you would strike the home occupations restriction to allow home occupation.
Well, yeah, that, that's a little too loose, though. I think there are intensive uses that you wouldn't allow.
This is just gonna be silent as to the issue of home occupations, though.
Okay.
So just to be clear, someone would have to go get a permit for their home occupation and a permit for a homestay. This is kind of a lot.
We're just gonna stay out of whether or not someone's doing a home occupation. We're not gonna lap it with homestays. So if we just remove the reference altogether?
I think that's part of the motion now. Now we can have a substitute measure or we can have discussion. I don't think we have any language in front of us now, nor has it been considered which ones we would or would not include. That's pretty tough to do tonight, I think.
We're just removing it.
Just take out, Jay.
We're gonna keep it or leave it. With respect to, there would be another addition that would state there is only one per owner?
That's one per...
Yes.
That's one per, per lot. One per lot, one per owner. I think that Shannon, we talked about the, making sure that this is a 30-day or less requirement as opposed to a long-term renter. Did I leave anything out of that?
You, you perfectly captured the spirit of my motion, Robin.
I've been working on this all day, so...
Can I, can I ask a question? And you're adding the eligibility for non-conformity?
Yeah, you're adding the non... And add the eligibility for the non-conformities, correct?
Yes.
Are we, are we, are we requiring that the host be present?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But only two forms of identification, which is in your current staff report for tonight, which is another, yet another piece of paper.
And that we will review this in four, eight, and 12 months to determine, well, let's go on.
Okay, what I would suggest is that you complete this ordinance motion and talk about your comp plan consistency and come back with another motion that talks about your review.
Motion is made.
With the reasonable and in the public interest...
Yes.
And that...
And I find, according to the text in front of me, that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plan in the following ways. By expanding an existing economic opportunity to more residents of Asheville.
Okay.
Second.
And we don't need a further, another motion after this. This is it.
Not for the ordinance.
Revisiting, no.
The revisiting, the revisiting, right, okay. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Now, we need a motion for your revisiting schedule.
I'd like to make a motion to revisit this at four, eight, and 12 months.
Second.
And, and can I say, when you say revisit it, are...
You want, oh...
Yeah, we need one more motion. As a part of the, Shannon reminded me...
Can you finish this one really quick?
Yes.
And just to clarify, what I thought you were saying is you would like to have an update about, you know, how many permits we're seeing. You don't want full consideration of amendments to the ordinance?
Absolutely not. I'm seeking a staff report about number of permits, complaints issued, and other staff concerns that have arisen over the course of the process.
That's what I was seconding.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now the next motion, the final motion.
And this is just to clean up. In your homestay definition, they talk about the use districts that are, where it's a USSR and we've added some additional ones into the table of permitted uses. So that motion would just be that you move to approve the table of permitted uses with respect to the homestay use and find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans in the following ways, specifically by expanding an existing economic opportunity to more residents of Asheville?
I'm moved.
Okay.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Second, okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Woo, we did it, okay. Thank you all for your patience.
Thank you.
If you'll just exit quietly, we've got one other item on our agenda. We'll try to get through that. I have Kathy Ballas doing this item of new business, but no. She'll be up, no. No, you can, I can do it. I can do it. I know what it is.
Ashley, I want the lines to be good.
We, oh, that was the public hearing, but if you wait around, we can come out and talk to you. That was the public hearing portion on, of that item.
That person tried to answer a question. I thought it was gonna be that, or you have a chance. So I just try to understand the question.
I'm gonna encourage you to talk with Shannon, who's right there. We tried to answer some of them, but if you have additional questions...
Ask people.
Okay, we're, we've got to move on to the next item on our agenda. Homestay folks, just step into the hall and, and chat out there and maybe some staff will be able to come out there and, and answer any remaining questions. Or maybe not, maybe they're gonna stay right here. Thank you. All right, we have one item of new business under here. It's a motion to approve one full-time equivalent position for a downtown central business district coordinator. And I'll, I'll let Gary, why don't you talk about this? But we wanted to, we put it under new business because we wanted to highlight, highlight the administrative move here.
Yes, as the council knows, we have a lot of initiatives, heightened law enforcement. Hey, you wanna do this, Sam?
Yes.
Sam, hey, never mind. See, we were so fast, you had no idea.
I made it quick from the fifth floor. Kathy had a commitment and so I am substituting for her. Mayor and city council members, I'm Sam Powers, I'm Community and Economic Development Director, and the consideration tonight is to request an additional FTE employee, a full-time employee, for the remainder of the fiscal year that we're in, that will concentrate on downtown management issues and will be funded partially from the Parking Enterprise Fund and partially from savings from the General Fund, primarily in contracted services and, and public works. And very quickly, this does not require a budget amendment due to, as your staff report would point out, the revenues accruing to the Parking Fund in the current year and, as I mentioned, savings that potentially are occurring in contracted services. Just a very quick review and I will, I'll pass this around and also put a copy on the If you will, if we could focus in just a little bit more on this, I know it's a little hard to read. Thank you, thank you, Maggie. So what, what you will see there on the list and also what folks at home can see are really kind of three different issues of initiatives that are occurring, stakeholders and organizations in downtown, and a lot of the different issues. And we, we did this on purpose because everybody on city council and all of the different stakeholders, I think your eyes will be drawn immediately to one or more issues that, that you know that we're dealing with. And so there are a myriad of things that are going on that staff deal... we're dealing with, and so there are a myriad of things that are going on that staff deal with day in and day out, you can see the first section of those, everything from street cleaning, graffiti removal, parking, panhandling, all the things we hear all of the time, staff deals with those on a daily basis. I didn't pass around, but this is a five-page sheet of issues, every month, a group of staff members from different departments in the city meet to discuss all of these issues in downtown and try and keep up with them, but the fact of the matter is, there is no one person right now on city staff who wakes up every day whose primary job is to deal with downtown issues, and so this would allow the city staff to designate someone to, again, deal with the different departments internally, to deal with external stakeholders, and to work on the primary issues that have been identified, and, of course, those are all just partial issues, I don't think anyone could list them all. That really is the brief summary, I won't take much more time on the staff report, I'll be happy to try and answer any questions that council have. Councilman Davis, I know you were at the most recent downtown commission meeting, and this is a priority of downtown commission, and I think as part of their report of issues they will be sending to council or consideration at council's next retreat, I think that will be one of the things that they would be recommending, so I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
I would add to that, if you don't mind, Sam, Sam did a great job of explaining the difficulties, downtown commission at the retreat, the annual retreat, and most recent meeting, I think they have spoken favorably, and probably want a little stronger position than this, I think their description would probably overall be one of a downtown manager, however, I think this really gets at the issue of having a person assigned, that much like we did when we had the downtown office, coordinated the things that are going on, is aware of it, when we have development issues occurring, that person's, it works much like Stephanie does in the Riverfront, and I think it's a necessary position, there's a lot of, a lot of activities, we all know downtown, and I think it's going to get to be more, they would like that to happen.
You're going to have some time, maybe you could apply.
I could apply for this job, you explain that to my wife and family.
It would be a race.
Hey, I think I can do this.
Yeah, that's right, you're definitely qualified.
I'm kind of curious how this position fits in with the transportation and parking, if this person's going to be responsible for tracking and analysis of parking in the downtown and South Slope area, isn't that something that the transportation department's already doing?
They do, again, I think with all of the other issues going on, I think having, you know, additional capacity is going to be, as has been identified as being helpful to that. It's, a lot of times, again, you know, all of the different issues, it's primarily an issue of staff capacity.
And if I could add, if you go back to, like I have recently, and read the downtown master plan, the mobility issues, the parking issues are intertwined, and it's supposed to be a focus in this timeframe.
All right, thank you, any other questions? All right, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I would move that we act on the recommendation of the staff to approve the addition of one full-time equivalent position for a downtown coordinator.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, anyone wishing to comment on the motion? No, all right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't have anyone signed up to speak at the, at this portion of the meeting, but if there's anyone here who would like to provide public comment on an item we didn't cover tonight, this is your opportunity to do that.
Yeah, I'm Jane Matthews, I appreciate Councilman Smith revisiting the ordinance that you just passed, I would also ask that you look at, another statistic, the loss of housing, because I think you will find that there will be a loss of housing, you know, I think to know that a unit that was used by someone who lived here is now rented is an important data that we need to track. I've read articles, I've downloaded articles about the loss of housing in various communities, it's mapped in cities like New York, which are much larger than us, but it's mapped as to how those things are lost, I think we're putting our head in the sand if we don't do that, and I really, really encourage you to try to do that if you have any hope of maintaining any affordable housing in Asheville, and I'm talking about not just homeownership, I'm talking about rental opportunities, thank you.
All right, anyone else wishing to comment here at the end of our meeting? All right, and I would just say, on for well, our three outgoing council members, it's been a delight to serve with you, and I am definitely going to miss you.
And you're always welcome.
Yeah, but you can get a seat.
In front of the television.
Yeah, you're always welcome. All right, so with that, anyone, yes?
I know that would have been a real tidy way to end the meeting, but I did want to report that the housing summit was held yesterday at the Civic Center, where you may be watching future council meetings in your lobby, but there were hundreds of people who turned out for this, there were lenders, and builders, and philanthropists, and nonprofits, and community members, all coming together to work on the affordable housing issue. Jane's point is very well taken tonight, and I think that, I'm not quite sure how you go about tracking that sort of thing, but I think that, you know, one thing that Councilman Bothwell's been arguing for is more data all along, and so the more, the better, and I'm sure that staff may have some other ideas for things to track that may be germane, but at this thing yesterday, it was a conversation I haven't seen before, and about a quarter of the people in the room were people that I hadn't seen before, including, one guy showed up for me, he's a building supply guy, and he had gotten with his competitor, one of his competitors is in the building supply business, and wanted to talk to him about making some agreements about lower cost for supplies for people building affordable housing. This is not because he wants the city to make him do it, this is because we have a community that is recognizing the depth and importance of this problem, and they want to see the health of our community continue, I saw that spirit in that room yesterday. Next steps are, the Chamber of Commerce created an affordable housing task force that's going to be bringing some of those institutional players together, lenders, builders, education heads, workforce development folks, philanthropists, and over the next couple of months, they are going to come to some conclusions, and then join back with us to see how we can merge our efforts, with the intention of having a second iteration of this housing summit in the spring, just wanted to report that to everybody. And, yeah, thanks so much for your service, gentlemen, it's been an honor, and I've learned so much from every single one of you.
We have a closed session motion, this is how Gwen likes to finish off hurried.
I do, I do, and you know what, I'm sorry to see the new council members leave, only Julie's here, so listen closely, this is very fun.
Gwen will be giving up her position.
I hope so, unless, unless the mayor really dislikes me. I move that the Asheville City Council go into closed session for the following reasons: one, to perfect disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina, or not considered a public record within the meaning of chapter 132 of the general statutes, a law that makes the information privileged and confidential of North Carolina general statute 143-318.10A3, the statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina general statute 143-318.11A1; two, to consult with an attorney employed by the city about matters with respect to which the attorney-client privilege between the city and its attorney must be preserved, including but not limited to a lawsuit involving the following parties: Rebecca Robertson, Juan Neer, Crystal Weatherly, and the city of Asheville, the statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina general statute 143-318.11A3; and three, to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries, the statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina general statute 143-318.11A4.
One breath, did you do it on one breath?
Pretty much.
That's great.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great, we will adjourn to the closed session.